Could we please ask for the live streaming documents?
Good evening, councillors, officers and our viewers live streaming tonight's meeting. My name is councillor Suzanne Newton. I'm the mayor of Darabin City Council and the chairperson of tonight's meeting. It's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's council meeting and I declare the meeting open at 6:04pm. The meeting is being livestreamed and a recording will be made available on the council website as soon as practicable after the meeting. I'd first like to acknowledge the Wondry Woywarrang people, the traditional owners of the land, and pay my respects to elders past and present and I recognise their enduring connection to land, water and culture. And from my personal perspective, I also declare my support for treaty in Victoria. In terms of membership, I would like to introduce the councillors and senior staff who are with us this evening. We have councillor Tim Lawrence, the deputy mayor, councillor Emily de Mitrillades, councillor Gaetano Greco, councillor Tom Hannan, councillor Trent McCarthy is on his way, councillor Lena Messina, councillor Susan Reddy and councillor Julie Williams. Our officers in attendance tonight are Peter Smith, the CEO, Kylie Bennetts, the general manager of community, Ena Giampiccolo, the acting general manager at customer and corporate, Rachel Livier, the general manager, infrastructure, operations and finance, Vanessa Petrie, the general manager, city sustainability and strategy, and Anthony Smith, the governance advisor. And I'd like to welcome our municipal monitors, June Anstey and Ross Millard. Item three is apologies and we have no apologies tonight. Item four is disclosure of conflict of interest. Councillors and officers, are there any conflicts of interest or interest to declare? Councillor Reddy.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a conflict on the budget item which has been mentioned. I'll declare that conflict at the time. It's been prepared separately. I have a conflict on Your Street You'll Say because I'm in the immediate catchment of some of the interventions. I'll also declare that at that time.
Thank you. Have we got further conflicts of interest to declare?
I've just got a conflict on Northcote Golf Course if it's come up inside the budget.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence. I believe we're prepared for that one. And councillor Messina.
Through you, Mayor. I've got a conflict if anything arises in relation to aged care.
Thank you. We're prepared for all of those. Have I got any other interest to declare? No. Okay, we'll go to item five, which is confirmation of the minutes of previous meeting. Councillors, could I have a move for the adoption of the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 27th of May and the special meeting held last week on the 17th of June? Councillor Greco, do I have a second to councillor Williams? All those in favour? That's carried unanimously. So we'll now go to item six, council's occupational health and safety responsibilities. Council has an occupational health and safety responsibility to ensure anyone attending tonight's meeting feels safe, both physically and emotionally. It's great to see you all here this evening. I'd like to remind everyone in attendance to please be respectful of each other and as outlined in our governance rules, please note the following. A councillor or any other person who addresses a meeting must do so in a courteous and respectful manner and must take direction from the chairperson whenever called on to do so. Any member of the public attending a meeting must not utter any offensive, indecent, insulting or objectional items or words, including words that are racist, sexist or homophobic or interject or disticulate offensively in the council chamber. Silence must be preserved by the gallery at all times during a meeting, other than by the person in the gallery who is invited to address the meeting. If any member of the public engages in conduct that is improper or disorderly, the chairperson may direct that person to cease their conduct and the person must comply with that direction. We'll now go on to item seven, which is public question time. We have 30 minutes for this section and if we exceed that time, I'll ask for a procedural motion to extend question time for another 30 minutes. In line with council's governance rules, no questions will be taken from people in the gallery unless they were submitted by 12 noon today. You can ask three questions and you cannot speak for more than two minutes. Be mindful, this is question time, so only ask your question. Please don't make a statement. Questions related to notice of motion, petitions or urgent business will not be accepted in accordance with the governance rules. For members of the public who have registered to ask a question in person, I will call your name when it's time. If I call your name and you do not respond, I'll take it that you are not in the gallery and one of our officers will read the question on your behalf. The relevant general manager will then provide a response. If you're attending in person or virtually, I'll invite you to come to lectern or unmute your microphone to state your name and ask your question. Like questions will be grouped together. The first person who submitted like questions can ask their question. So we will now go on to public question time. So the first question is Kate Polglaze. Would you like to come to the lectern? Felicity, would you mind reading Kate's question? Thank you.
Through you, Mayor. The first question, council has indicated its support for the Aboriginal Women and Girls Wellness Centre being built at the Aboriginals' Advancement League in Thornbury. It is an excellent initiative that will address gender disparity in sports while supporting First Nations self-determination, cultural practice and policies underpinning closing the gap targets. How will council demonstrate its continued support for the centre and indeed council's own policies of equity through a gender, diversity and inclusion lens?
Thank you. We'll go to Kylie for the response.
Through you, Mayor. Council contributed $200,000 in 2021 and has supported this important project by auspicing a $3.9 million Community Sports Infrastructure stimulus grant from Sport and Recreation Victoria. And council is also participating on the project steering committee. Council is currently working with the Aboriginals' Advancement League on whether there is potential for council to provide in-kind support for the storage of some materials for the project, which could result in a financial saving for the project. With respect to a further financial contribution, that is a matter for council to consider as part of its budget deliberations this evening.
Thank you, Kylie. The next question is from Kelly of Thornbury and I'll ask Felicity to read the question, please.
Through you, Mayor. The first question, how would the growing community of young families be best placed in requesting a basketball, netball, downball court or half-court to be erected near or next to one of the playgrounds either side of Croxton Station? The second question, how did the decision to remove the tennis courts come about rather than upgrading them to be multi-purpose? Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go to Rachel to answer both those questions.
Thank you, Kelly. Certainly, I understand the value of those sorts of facilities. I've got older kids who really enjoy basketball myself. Council definitely tries to spread those facilities around the city. And an idea like yours could be put to council at any time. The challenge with the Croxton Station location is it isn't council-owned land and therefore it's not a location where we are planning or thinking about additional facilities. There is a council basketball or netball court at All Nations Park, which is one of Darabin's premier parks and is just under a kilometre away from Croxton Station. The second question you've asked, we understand it's about the Clyde Street Tennis Court. So how did the decision to remove the tennis court come about? In 2022, a safety audit of the tennis court found it wasn't safe. So there were trip points due to a cracked, sunken and in some places slippery surface and that's why council closed it to the public. Prior to its closure, we'd received a number of complaints about late night use and noise. We, like many local governments, have a number of sites that are at end of life. Quite a lot of our facilities were built at about the same time and it is unlikely that council will be able to fund redevelopment of all of the facilities at end of life. Certainly, council will consult with community and clubs about how to best address this challenge. We haven't yet confirmed a timeframe for that sort of consultation and there may well be options to make facilities more multi-purpose so they can be shared.
Thank you, Rachel. The next question is from Serena of Reservoir, who's not attending. So Felicity, I'll get you to ask her questions, please.
Through you, Mayor. Under section 53.01 of the Darabin Planning Scheme, a person who proposes to subdivide land must make a contribution to the council for public open space, either as a percentage of the land intended to be used for residential, industrial or commercial purposes or a percentage of the site value of such land or a combination of both. This money is held in Darabin Council's Public Open Space and Recreation Reserve. The first question is, what is the total amount of money currently in the Public Open Space and Recreation Reserve and how much of this money is committed to projects in the 2024-2025 draft budget? The second question, what is the current percentage of land or the site value of such land required to be contributed by developers to the Public Open Space and Recreation Reserve?
Thank you. I'll go to Vanessa for those two questions and then we'll go back to Felicity for the third.
Through you, Mayor. Thank you, Serena, for your questions. There is currently $10.156 million sitting within the Public Open Space and Recreation Reserve and $5.8 million of expenditure in the 2425 budget has been attributed against the open space reserve and levy. And regarding your second question, currently clause 53.01 of the Darabin Planning Scheme requires open space contributions according to a sliding scale of 1%, 3% and 4% of the land value for subdivisions, creating an additional 2%, 3% and 4% additional lots respectively. Subdivision of five or more additional lots already contribute at 5%. Council is currently proposing an amendment to the Darabin Planning Scheme, that's C210D, which proposes to remove the 2% to 4% contribution rate and this will allow council to determine a rate under the subdivision act 1988, which could be up to 5%.
Thank you. And I'll go to Felicity for Serena's third question.
Through you, Mayor. The first, the question is, where will the 19 submissions about the draft 2024-2025 budget, which were heard on 3rd of June 2024, be summarised and responded to on the public record?
Thank you. I'll go to Rachel for that response.
Thank you for the question. What officers are going to do this afternoon, you'll see it later in the meeting, is we will amend our recommendation to councillors this evening to recommend that that appendix be released publicly after removal of personal and confidential information. So subject to council's decision, we would publish that appendix on council's website within two weeks.
Thanks, Rachel. I'll now go back to Felicity to ask the questions from Ruth of Northcote, who is not attending. Thank you.
Through you, Mayor. The first question, given that one of the main issues for people who ride in Darabin is the disconnected nature of the overall network, why has council proposed to not proceed with separate bike lane design for Victoria Road South of Separation Street, for Victoria Road South of Separation Street, which is an important connector to the Heidelberg Road's separated bike lanes and when evidence shows that separated bike lanes improve safety for people who ride and encourage more women to ride? The second question is, what are the benefits of having a registered engineer consult on the Your Street, Your Say projects and designs and how does this improve safety outcomes for the Darabin community?
I've just got one more, please.
The third question is, will council advocate to the state government to address the statewide issue of speeding drivers, considering that this has been raised as an issue throughout Your Street, Your Say and that speeding is reportedly a significant contributor to road deaths in recent years?
Thank you. I'll go to Vanessa for the three responses to those questions.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor. Thank you for your questions, Ruth. Regarding your first question, encouraging safe and well-connected bicycle lanes remains a priority for council and aligns with the Darabin Transport Strategy. This evening, a report that covers this matter is being considered at item 9.4 with the officer recommendation to progress with investigations to develop the bike infrastructure along Victoria Road while limiting the impact on street parking. Regarding your second question, it is a requirement under the Professional Engineers Registration Act 2019 to be a registered professional engineer when providing professional engineering services, such as civil engineering, or to be under the direct supervision of a registered engineer. The benefits of having registered engineers includes promoting best practice in engineering services, ensuring engineering services are only provided by suitably qualified people, providing appropriate protection to consumers and members of the public and the above doesn't preclude council from seeking advice or feedback from non-engineers. And regarding your third question, speeding continues to be a challenge for Darabin and yes, council regularly advocates and works with various state agencies, including Victoria Police and the Department of Transport and Planning for enforcement and funding of road safety interventions. Last year, Darabin contributed to the parliamentary inquiry into vulnerable road users.
Thank you, Vanessa. The next person is Matt of Reservoir. And Matt, I'll get you to ask your three questions, then we'll go to the responses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. My first question is, in August 2023, a community petition with over 200 signatures was sent to council via email in relation to cracked and uneven footpaths along both sides of Link Street in Kingsbury. Despite reports of residents falling and suffering injury since then on this footpath, the only action taken to date is the painting of yellow lines across the lifted cracks in the footpath, which have since faded away. My question is, when will council acknowledge this petition and what action will council take to remediate the footpath along Link Street and make it safe for residents and traders? My second question is, council recently adopted a new outdoor dining policy. The policy requires traders with parklets under the COVID era state government scheme to apply for new permits to ensure compliance with the policy. Given the more stringent safety and compliance requirements of council's policy, what financial assistance, if any, from council is available to traders to assist them to ensure their parklets continue to operate into the future? And if such funding assistance is available, will it extend to new traders to create parklets? My third and final question, Mayor, is residents who have installed solar panels under schemes including council's solar programme have contacted council in relation to trees on adjoining council land overshadowing solar panels on their homes, rendering the panels almost redundant for most parts of the day. Council arborists have advised that they cannot do anything about the trees as there is no policy in place to deal with this issue. Is there a council policy in place to maintain trees on council land that grow and cast shadows over solar panels? And if not, will council investigate implementing such a policy?
Thank you for your questions, Matt. I'll go to Rachel for the first question about Link Street, Kingsbury.
Hi, Matt, and thank you for your question. We've had a look at our records this morning. We haven't been able to find a petition specifically, but certainly we've found the request in our system. The site has been inspected on the 21st of May this year and the team have found minor damage. They've found it in multiple locations, but it was minor in nature in that the displacement is less than 25 millimetres, either vertically or horizontally. And therefore, we're not intending doing works at this time. The footpath can continue to be used. We regard it as generally safe and we will inspect it periodically as we do with footpaths across the city. If that changes, we'll schedule works.
Thank you. I'll go to Kylie for the question about outdoor dining.
Through you, Mayor. Thank you for your second question, Matt. Council is providing modest support to current and new parklet hosts in the transitional year of the policy by not charging an application fee. Currently, council is not offering financial assistance for safety or compliance infrastructure associated with the new policy with businesses, both existing and new, needing to make a business decision on whether to host a parklet. And I'll hand you back to my colleague for the last question.
Thanks, Kylie. Back to you, Rachel.
Thank you and through you, Mayor. So you've asked about solar powers and, sorry, solar power and trees. And certainly both of those topics are areas where council does a lot of work, both to stimulate uptake of solar and to protect trees. What you've highlighted though is an example of where it's tricky to achieve both at the same time. We do have a current practice and that is that there are very few circumstances where a tree would be pruned or removed. Generally, it's only done for safety reasons. That approach is primarily designed to protect and retain as many trees as possible. With increasing urban development, reducing trees on private land, protecting trees on council land and in streets is regarded as important. And therefore, we don't currently prune trees to prevent overshadowing of solar panels. To do so would require significant new funding that council hasn't historically provided for that purpose. And at this point in time, I'm not aware of plans to review that approach. I would encourage residents to consider other options like energy efficiency or purchasing renewable energy from other solar or wind sites across Victoria.
Thanks, Rachel. And thank you, Matt. I'll go to John of Epping. John, would you like to ask your questions?
Thank you. Last meeting, I asked about the unsealed pavement, which hasn't been done at Donath West by council. Council has advised that they will start the unsealed pavement in June or July and the unsealed pavement will be only 1 metre to 1.5 metres wide, while the sealed pavements, sealed pavements, sealed pavement are 2.3 metres wide. Mayor, my question is, one would expect the unsealed pavement to be the same size as the sealed pavement just purely for financial reason. Mayor, why is this not so?
Thank you, John. Would you like to ask your other two questions and then we'll go to the answers?
Okay, Mayor. Thank you. Mayor, at the last council meeting in May, I believe you tried to bully me, intimidate me and were biased when I was asking a question. You didn't allow me to ask the question, the question before you could rule it out. Also, at the same meeting, I asked the question, what did council pay for consultants from 1722 to 3623 and from 1723 to 311223? Tell me where to find it. It was not an answer and I expect this information will be provided to me now at this meeting.
Thank you, John. Would you like to ask your third question?
Certainly will, Mayor. Mayor, I believe this council is going to continue the charge, on charge for seniors and junior clubs on its present policy. This policy discriminates against junior clubs two-fold. One is that junior clubs pay the same as senior clubs. Two, the council subsidy discriminates against small junior boys' clubs. If this policy is going to continue for the 2324 financial year, all I can say is all you nine councillors should hang your heads in shame. This policy was asked to be asked about in December 2021 to bring this policy forward and again on the 25th of March 24. Council was asked on the 23, will this new policy be introduced before the winter season? Mayor, do you expect a two-team junior club, under nines and under elevens, to pay the same as a senior club? Do you expect the junior club to pay another $2,500 fees? Mayor, what are the council going to do about this subsidy performance that discriminates against small and junior clubs? Do you expect children of small junior teams to pay for council's mistakes? And what will council do now about the subsidy's performance to help small junior clubs to endure this hardship?
Thank you very much for your questions, John. I'll go to Rachel for the first answer about the pavement at Donath West.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor. Hi, John. Certainly, I can confirm that the plan is to widen the unsealed pavement to between 1 and 1.5 metres. That's what's intended for Donath West and I can certainly clarify that the widths between particular pavements aren't expected to be the same in all locations. When we're designing a park, we consider several things, including how it'll be used, the types of uses, the number of uses, what it will look like, maintenance requirements and yes, also the cost.
Can you give me examples of that, Mayor?
Sorry, John, I'll just go to Ena next to answer your second question about consultants.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor. Hi, John. Thanks for your question about the expenditure on consultants. In the year 2022-23, council spent $3.9 million on consultants and the expenditure on consultants for this financial year will be published in the 2324 annual report results.
Thank you, Ena.
I asked till the 31st of December, 23, a six-month period. Didn't ask for what is for the end of this year, only asked for a six-month period then.
Thank you, John. I can reiterate Ena's answer, which is that in the 2223 year, council spent $3.9 million on consultants. And I'll go to Kylie for your, the answer to your third question about the clubs.
She hasn't answered part B. Mayor, no, no, no. You're here to answer questions, not here to, I'm not here to argue. I asked from the 1st of July, as I did last meeting, from the 1st of July 23 to the 31st of December. Now surely you can tell me what that is. I'm not trying to be argumental or nothing.
John, I might go on to our CEO, Peter Smith. Thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor. We don't normally do a half-year expenditure report. We can have a look because some of those consultants will go over the periods. That's why we report annually. I think we're meeting to you tomorrow, John. I'll try and find that answer for you tomorrow and take it on notice now.
Wednesday.
Yep, I'll take it on notice for now and I'll see if I can get your six-month figure, but we generally wouldn't capture that because consultants go over the year, which is why, and I said, we would publish it the end of the financial year. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. And thank you, John. I'll go to Kylie next, who can respond about the senior and junior clubs.
Sure. Through you, Mayor. John, thank you for coming to council this evening and sharing your feedback and perspectives. A report was presented to council on the 29th of April responding to a request from council to look at licensing fees for sporting clubs. At the April meeting, council decided to maintain Darabin's current approach, but they did request that officers commence a holistic review in 2025 and that will also include consultation with sporting clubs. Officers had hoped that we would be in a position to review this policy earlier than that. It has been a bit delayed and we apologise for that. That delay has been caused by other work priorities and unscheduled business.
What of taking money off kids? That's what you're boiling it down to.
John, I'll get you to resume your seat, please.
No, 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 not arguing. I'm just saying, taking the money off two.
I'll get you to resume your seat, please. Thanks, Ruth. I'll get you to resume your seat, please, John.
Mayor, I asked this question in December 23 about bringing this policy forward. And I asked again on the 25th of March about will the new charges be met? You've had plenty of time, but council's done nothing about it.
Point of order, Mayor.
Yes, councillor Reddy.
This behaviour is under 10.1A, is contrary to the meeting rules.
Thank you. John, we do have, John, I'll get you to resume your seat, please. And I hope that you have a lovely meeting with Peter on Wednesday and I'm sure that he can help you with some of your questions. Thank you. Have a lovely evening. Thank you. I'll now go on to submissions. So council's governance rules permit members of the public to register to address an ordinary council meeting in relation to matters listed on the agenda. And we have one request to make a submission. Do we have Emily Ferris in the audience? Great, thanks, Emily. Just come to the lectern. And you're wanting to make a submission about 9.3, the special rate renewal for the Preston, Northgate and Fairfield business precincts? Emily, you've got two minutes, so please go ahead.
Yep, just quickly. My name's Emily, obviously. I'm representing the Business Association here. I'm the vice president. Making a submission in support of the renewal of the special rate levy. The work the Business Association carries out has a The work the Business Association carries out has a positive impact on the Northgate High Street traders, and would like to continue to work collectively with all businesses to achieve a viable and strong shopping precinct.
Thank you very much Emily. So we next have item eight petitions, but we have no petitions tonight, so we will go on to reports. But firstly councillors, we do have a large agenda to get through this evening, and we need to get through in line with the time limits that are in our governance rules. So what I would really encourage tonight is, if it's possible, if only the mover can speak to the motion, and if we have anyone in opposition, if that person could speak. So my ask of you councillors is if you're a seconder and you don't need to speak, please don't, so we can get through the full agenda. And I will be permitting questions of officers prior to the commencement of debate on each item. And if I think sufficient questioning has occurred, I will exercise my right under the governance rules to limit questions and ask for the debate to commence. So we now will go on to item nine, we're at consideration of reports. And the first report we have to consider this evening is 9.1, the adoption of the 2425 budget, which incorporates the four-year financial outlook and the associated documents. Councillors, we do have an amended officer recommendation on this, and I know from before that we have three councillors who wish to declare conflicts of interest in relations to point one, two and three. So the way that we'll handle this is points one, two and three will be voted on separately to allow for affected councillors to declare their conflicts and leave the room while the debate and vote is undertaken on the relevant item. So what we will do first is, we're going to go to point one, and that is, that does relate to aged care, so councillor Messina, do you want to re-declare your conflict?
Yes I do, but I also have a question please Mayor.
Yes, so just to clarify, we'll do general questions first, and then, thanks councillor Messina, then we'll move to having each conflicted councillor step out. So councillor Messina, did you want to ask your questions about the budget?
Thank you, through you Mayor. There's a lot of talk and chatter, not only amongst the Darabin community, but also external. Can I please have an officer or somebody that represents the executive committee to discuss a surplus? What an actual surplus means, what a financial surplus means, and what does it actually mean in terms of cash, in terms of projections, so that there's no misconception in terms of looking at bottom lines and thinking that a surplus actually means that's how much council has in the bank.
Yes, thank you councillor Messina, and this is something that, yeah, I certainly took a while to get my head around. So I think Rachel will go to you and Shreem for the response.
Thank you Mayor, and thank you for the question. So the language that council's documents use is the language of surplus. Perhaps the way to explain that is to use the analogy of a household. So a household would earn most of its income through its wage, and then it's got costs. So the sorts of things a household might spend money on, food, utility bills, there are probably some unpredictable, less frequent costs too, like occasionally the house might need to be repainted or the car might need to be replaced. And so council's surplus is like that. We've, it's what's left over after it's earned its income, and then it's factored in both its day-to-day running costs and its sort of predictable costs for keeping what it's got at its standard. So for council, that might be planning ahead to replace the roof of a pavilion, or paying the water bills to irrigate a sports field, or those sorts of things. What isn't covered by the surplus is risks or unexpected costs. So in the last few years, one of those unexpected costs has been the price inflation that we've all experienced. And neither is planning for improvements. So a lot of the community submissions through the budget process are seeking council to improve things, either change them because needs have changed, or make improvements to make them better or to meet the needs of more people. And actually, those are the things that aren't covered in council's core budget. So the surplus is what's left over. And the fact that council can fund improvements now is because it's saved up those surpluses in the past. The same way a household, if it wants to improve its kitchen, it needs to put money aside to save up for that, council needs to do the same thing. And so what we save now is what we would use to improve things in future years. And the way that we fund our improvements now is because we did that saving in past years.
Through you Mayor, can I ask Mr Olivier to describe the difference between operating surplus and a cash surplus, and what the underlying result is, because I think that tells the true story to answer councillor Messina's question.
So I will see if I can do this reasonably simply. So some, some differences between the operating surplus and the cash surplus, hold on a second, so some differences between the operating surplus and the underlying result are things like once-off or restricted funds. So an example of that, that you might, we might know is a grant for an improvement at a pavilion. So it's got to be spent on that particular thing, it doesn't contribute to, it can't be saved away by council for something else. So that's an example of that. There are some elements of the budget as well that are non-cash. Can you think, Shreem, can you give me an example of a good non-cash? Depreciation, yep. So that's where our assets change in price each year. So if, when this building was built, it was worth more than when it was five years old. And so depreciation is a non-cash change.
Thank you, great question and really great response Rachel, thank you. Councillor Messina, did you have further questions?
I think I'd like it simpler, if that's okay. If I can ask the CEO perhaps to address the simple answer in terms of a surplus doesn't actually mean council has that money in the bank to spend on items that people want to put up and put submissions on.
Thanks councillor Messina.
Through you Mayor, the operating surplus, which is a balance sheet item, which has got some of those non-cash items, is 10.3 million. The cash surplus, which is in the papers, I'm just trying to remember, is about 6.1. If I've got that right, my CFO, thank you, which is the, which is the surplus in cash. So that's income cash in, cash out, but the underlying result, and so yes, you have cash, you're getting more income in cash in than cash out, but that cash is then funding the forward capital programme. So if you were to take a large amount out of that surplus, what you've really got to look at is over the four or 10-year plan. Because it's like Rachel said, if you're not putting away those savings, when you've got to do that new roof, then you haven't got the money to do it. So it's not just a one-year issue, we've done well this year, we've got a cash surplus. It's really, that's the money you've got to put away for when you have got a lot of unexpected expenses, you might run close to a deficit, and that's when you need the cash in the bank to be able to do those things. So yes, you can, when you've got a surplus, put that to a budget item, but you've got to look at the four and 10-year effect of that, and that's obligation under the Local Government Act, to have a four-year plan and a 10-year plan. And it's those surpluses you make each year that then pay for those major upgrades and renewals and those sorts of things.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have further questions councillor Messina? No, have we got further questions on the budget? Councillor Tavitares.
I just wanted to clarify, sorry, what is the surplus for council, for this budget?
Thank you. Shreem, did you want to answer what the surplus is?
The, thank you Mayor, through yourself, the draft proposed operating surplus is 10.27 million, close to 10.3 million. 10.3 million is the reported surplus.
Thank you. Did you have further questions?
Yes, thank you. Over the past few years, councillors have received many complaints from sporting clubs about insufficient maintenance of sporting ovals. And just tonight, from the questions we've heard, Clyde Street Tennis Courts has been closed because it was not fit for purpose, from what we've heard. Have additional funds been included in the 2425 budget to address these maintenance concerns?
Rachel, did you want to take that?
So at a high level, there is, the budget includes maintenance programmes, and broadly sufficient maintenance programmes for the scale of assets you've got. I don't have details about the specific locations, but what it doesn't include is substantial funding to reopen any of those closed facilities such as Clyde Street.
Councillor Tavitares, did you have further questions?
Yes, thank you for the explanation about the tennis court. Through you Mayor, I wanted to ask specifically about the sporting ovals, whether there was additional funds from previous years that's been added to the 2425 budget to address a lot of the maintenance concerns.
Rachel, did you want to take that one?
So the team have built the budget to include maintenance of those. It would have been indexed and prices rechecked, but there hasn't been a substantial increase, sort of a step change. It is similar to last year, and broadly, it's about right for what it needs to do.
Thank you. Did you have further questions?
Through you Mayor, I also wanted to ask, I note that council has been made aware of various maintenance concerns of council-owned buildings that have not been upkept over the years, and now they require greater attention and increased costs to fix. Have additional funds been included in the 2425 budget to address the need for greater maintenance of council-owned buildings from what was previously put in the budgets over the years?
Rachel, over to you.
So the programme for building renewals, and for the budget that's proposed is prioritised based on the condition of those buildings. And then that's the primary first, first consideration, whereas the condition suggests we need to put the funding first. It also considers safety and usage. And broadly, the amount allocated for renewal and maintenance is sufficient to keep that stock at about the same standard it currently is. It's not funding that would see an improvement or an update to that stock.
I might insist, if I might, through you Mayor, council has buildings with a net asset value of 452 million dollars, and the 2324 maintenance operation budget was just over 5 million dollars, which represents an investment of about 1.1% of asset value in maintenance, that's really not sufficient. I think we've got over 300 buildings, many of which have not been maintained properly. Our total depreciation, if you read the papers tonight, is about 27 million, 26, 27 million. And certainly with the older stock and older buildings, and it's the same for parks, I think we've got 123 million dollars' worth of assets in open spaces, so the same for sporting spaces. And again, we're not spending sufficient maintenance on that, because we've got a lot of these to try and spread a thin budget around. So to answer your question, have we put enough money into maintaining? We are barely covering depreciation, you've got a total capital programme of 30 million, you've got depreciation running at 27 million, so that shows, and we're probably not keeping up with depreciation in terms of maintenance on both buildings and parks. So, and that's, again, becomes a long-term problem, because if you don't fix those buildings up, it's like if you don't fix the leaking roof, you're then fixing the rafters and replacing the whole roof. So the problem is the amount of assets we've got to maintain and the money we've got available to maintain them.
Thank you Peter, that's very useful. Councillor Tavitares, did you have further questions? No. And look, I think, I think this speaks to what a challenging budget environment we have with rate capping and interest rates and everything else. Councillor Greco, I'll go to you next.
Thank you Mayor, I have three questions in relation to clause 16 of the recommendation. And the first question is in regards to point B, where a report is recommended that the CEO prepares a report for council to consider, looking at the scope and scale of services. I would like to ask whether this report will be considering the cutting back of council services.
Peter, did you want to take that question?
Through you Mayor, 16 relates to council's obligations under the Local Government Act, which is in Division 4101 Part B, which requires councils to act according to certain financial management principles. Basically, the principle there is financial risks must be monitored and managed prudently having regard to economic circumstances. There's a similar principle in the overarching governance principles in the Local Government Act, which require councils to be financially sustainable. 16 of this recommendation relates to risks which are contained and described in this report, which point to the fact that we need to make additional savings. In fact, if you look at the four-year financial plan, you'll see that there were 3 million of savings made this financial year, close to 2.4 in the draft for next financial year, and then further savings of about 2.4 and 2% in the out-years. Those savings, council can't meet its obligations under the Local Government Act to be financially sustainable without doing an in-depth look at all of its services. The 3 million we've saved this year, and the services, and the 2.4 we're trying to save in the next financial year, have been done largely without service impacts. We're now at the point where we need to look at service options for the incoming council as they frame their new long-term financial plan. This is not a report, it, 16 asks the CEO to develop options for consideration by the new council as they develop the new four-year financial outlook, which they'll adopt in June 25, and the new long-term financial plan. And it's to assist the new council to meet their obligations, as I've described under the Local Government Act.
Thank you. Peter?
Question number two, again in relation to point 16, is the subclause D there that talks about consolidation of facilities or assets. Does this mean, or are we looking at selling community assets?
Through you Mayor, consolidation might mean disposal of unused assets. It might mean looking at how assets can be utilised over a day. So how do you get more 24/7 use out of assets? How do you get shared use of assets? That can be looking at shared sporting facilities. And it may be, and those may be options to be put to the new council, disposal of assets and investment of the funds of those back into refurbishment of better community assets that can be, that can have that increased utilisation. So those certainly some of the options that are contemplated under clause D.
Thank you, and you've got a third question?
And the third question is in relation to, again, clause 16, point E, where it talks about operating models for service delivery. Again, I ask, does this mean that we will be considering the outsourcing of service delivery? And just in general, does this general, does this clause generally considering an austerity programme for the council in the coming year, years?
Thank you for the question councillor Greco. Through you Mayor, operating models, I think we already outsourced some, we already have partnering funding, we have a lot of in-sourced models. It's really saying that's within the scope of this, of what the council need to look at to consider how they might have a financially viable long-term financial plan. Doesn't mean that those options will be taken up by the council, it means that this clause is asking us to look at those sorts of options for consideration by the council, and it'll be the decision of the council of the day whether they want to do that. But all of those things, to answer your last question, are about an austerity environment. They are about an environment where if you look at our four-year financial plan, we are running very short on cash in year four in particular. And all councils are suffering from the impacts of a number of things, including construction CPI going at about 25% at the moment, general CPI going well above the rates cap, and increasing demand for services by those in our community who are doing it very tough. So an inability to pass costs on to customers and community who are certainly experiencing hardship. So, raising fees and charges is not an option. So, yes, there's a demand for services and it's a very difficult time for councils all over the sector, but this council does need to look at its obligation, and it will be quite an austerity environment, Councillor Greco, for the next three to four years, to be absolutely frank.
Thank you, Peter. And, yes, from my perspective, financial sustainability is absolutely one of the core things we need to think about tonight as we sign off on our budget. Do we have further questions? Councillor Messina?
Can I ask the officers to address the surplus in relation to the open space levy, please? Because that would be considered in the financial budget, but we're actually looking at projects ahead.
Sure. Rachel, do you want to speak about the open space levy?
So, the open space levy is considered a type of funding that's for a particular purpose. So, it contributes to the operating surplus, but it doesn't contribute to the underlying result. So, I'm getting nods from my finance specialist here, so I've used the language correctly. Did that answer the question?
Yes, I wanted to make sure that the public understood what the surplus meant in terms of the open space that's already been, that will be accounted for in terms of Ford, rather than just thinking about numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Have we got further questions before we move to the budget? No, okay. So, what we'll do next is the sections where councils have a conflict. So, Councillor Messina, you've got a conflict on aged care.
I'd like to declare that I have a conflict, a direct conflict in relation to aged care, given that I'm an aged care service provider, I'm in that space.
Sure. I'll just get you to leave the room and we'll just pause for a minute while Councillor Messina leaves. Okay, councillors, we're at point one of the motions, so, yeah. So, can we get that on screen, please? And just for everyone's information, so we're sort of going one by one in terms of conflicts. So, we've got, Councillor Messina's left the room now and we're on point one. So, this, the point that we're on is that council, one, notes the net expenditure of $6.6 million for aged care-related services has been included in the 2425 operating budget. So, I do need a mover for this part of the budget. Councillor Rennie, do we have a second to Councillor McCarthy? And would the mover like to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep it very briefly because it's not the substantive debate on the budget. I'm delighted that our council continues to be very committed to the delivery of aged care-related services. $6.6 million is a significant amount of our budget and we know that our services are very much valued in the community. We're delivering these services in a changing climate in terms of what's happening at a federal level with my aged care, and I think that that does mean that some decisions around the way in which we deliver aged care services are being taken out of our hands, notwithstanding that, I'd take my hat off to the team who are incredibly flexible and responsive, and I know that their work is highly appreciated by members of the community.
Thank you, Councillor Rennie. Absolutely echo that. Councillor McCarthy, did you want to speak a second? No. Have we got anyone speaking in opposition to the motion? Any further speakers? No, thank you. Councillors, we'll go straight to the vote on one. So, all those in favour? Thank you. That's carried unanimously, and we'll ask for Councillor Messina to come back in the room, please. Councillor Rennie, did you want to declare a conflict for part two of the motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a conflict in relation to part two of the motion, which relates to expenditure at Jaka Jaka Community Centre, that expenditure relating to underfloor restumping works. I manage that centre, reporting to an independent committee of management, so I will absent myself from this item. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll just get you to leave the chamber and we'll pause. Thank you. Governess, can we get point two on screen, please? Thank you. So, we're at point two, notes that expenditure of $240,000 for Jaka Jaka Community Centre works has been included in the 2425 financial year of the four-year capital works programme. Do we have a mover for this part of the item? Councillor Hannan, do we have a second to Councillor Messina? And Councillor Hannan, would you like to speak to point two?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to say very briefly that the Jaka Jaka Community Centre provides wonderful service to the community in that part of Northcote, and it is quite in need in some parts of fixing up some of the facilities there. So, I would endorse this to council. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Messina, anything to add? Thank you. Have we got any speakers in opposition to this part of the motion? Any further speakers? No, thank you. Councillors, we'll go to the vote. All those in favour? It's carried unanimously. Thank you. And we'll get Councillor Rennie back in the chamber, please. Thank you. So, Governess will get point three up on screen. And Councillor Lawrence, did you want to declare a conflict?
Yes, through you, Mayor Newton, I'd like to declare a conflict of interest in relation to this item three in the budget that relates to Northcote Golf Course. Description of my nature, my interest is a family member has a residential amenity in close proximity of Norfolk Golf Course, and I'll be leaving the chamber while that item's dealt with.
Thank you. I'll get you to leave the chamber and we'll just pause while that happens. Thank you. So, we've got point three, notes that the expenditure of $600,000 for the Northcote Golf Course Eastern Path and Northern Path works has been included in the 2728 year of the four-year capital works programme. Do we have a mover? Councillor McCarthy and a second, Councillor Hannan. Councillor McCarthy, would you like to speak to this item?
Thanks, Mayor. Once again, I'll keep it brief. This is really just to pull that item out, obviously, out of the budget, given Councillor Lawrence's conflict, but also just to highlight that the identification of these works was part of the master planning work that council undertook in the last couple of years. It is important to note that there are proposed changes, including the introduction of an eastern path to support all access, connecting from effectively where Mayor Park is all the way through to where Wakwak Bridge is. Mayor, I would also add that the proposed Northern Park works will provide new and increased amenity for locals, for users, park users, and of course, will continue to see that investment in this site to provide a range of opportunities for recreation, not just golf, but also passive use, people making their way through the area in a safe way, but also connecting with community. And I think the proximity to our wonderful aged care facilities and local neighbourhoods and the Croxton School is going to see a high level of interest in this space. I would also add, whilst I would have loved these works to have occurred sooner, I think it's great to know that they're programmed into the next council's terms, budget process and capital works programme, and on that basis, happy to support it.
Thank you, Councillor McCarthy. Councillor Hannan, did you want to speak a second? Thank you. Do we have any speakers in opposition? Any further speakers to this item? No. Okay, councillors, we'll put this one to the vote as well. All those in favour? Thank you. That's carried unanimously, and can we get Councillor Lawrence back in the room, please? Great. Thank you, councillors. So, we're now past the bits where there's a conflict of interest, so we're going to move through the rest of the budget items, and if necessary or need be, we will vote on line items separately. So, do I have a mover of the motion, Councillor Rennie? And do I have a second? Councillor McCarthy? Councillor Rennie, are you moving the officer's recommendation?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. And would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think we all know, as colleagues who have been part of hours of discussions about the budget, what a difficult process this has been this year. And never in my time on council can I actually recall a time when a budget has come to us with the removal and a number of items that were in the budget on the night of the draft. And so, I think that's a reflection of just how difficult it has been to balance the books this year, that we come tonight with a budget that is actually pared back on the draft budget that we passed a couple of months ago. That includes the removal of a number of items to ensure that we can pass a budget within the budget envelope that we have set ourselves in the four-year financial plan. Nevertheless, I think that this budget demonstrates our ability to do an enormous amount for our community, and it's a very community-focused budget in terms of the sorts of expenditure that we've already talked about, but also a focus on continuing with investment in open space, continuing with an investment in maintaining our assets and delivering our essential services. And ultimately, we do know that this is something the community expects of us. I think it would be fair to say that in every budget that comes before us, there are some things that we like, there are some things that we're less keen on. Budgets are by their very nature a compromised position that is reached through hours of discussion. I'd like to particularly thank the staff for the work that they have put in. We don't make your life easy with our suggestions and our enthusiasm. The responsiveness of staff in coming back to us with costed initiatives to let us know that that thing that we thought would cost $5,000 will actually cost $50,000, and to be able to explain why, I think is really important, and that's something we then have to take to the community in explaining why we aren't able to do absolutely everything we would like in one year. I hope that people in the community will actually take the time to look at the budget. It doesn't just include what we're spending on, but it explains some of the foundation charges and the way things are calculated, in terms, including things like rates and the wayside, the curb side waste collection service. And I might leave it there, I commend this budget to everyone. I know that we're going to have significant further debate on amendments that will be put, and I think that it's important that we spend time on those. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the second like to speak?
I'll reserve my right, Mayor.
Sure. Have we got any, Councillor Greco? Would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mayor Newton. I have an amendment that I would like to, for councillors to consider.
Thank you. Can we get that on screen, please, team? Thank you, Councillor Greco. Is this your amendment?
That's part of the amendment. Can we go a little bit further down to see the rest of it? With that, um...
Is this your amendment, Councillor Greco?
Could we go back up? Because, um... So, I proposed that I deal with this as one amendment, as we discussed, with extra time.
Sure. So, just for the public, we did have a discussion about sort of how to draw amendments on the budget, and we were hoping, as Councillor Greco has, that councils with amendments would group them in one. So, rather than debating every single item, we'll do it in one. And I did suggest, or I'm quite comfortable with five minutes debate, because there is quite a bit in here. So, any councillor who wants to group their amendments can do so. So, oh, sorry, Councillor Hannan?
Can I ask a question, please? May I?
Yes, you may. Oh, sorry. Councillor Greco, is this your amendment?
There are five parts to the amendment.
So, like A, B, C, D, E?
One is the Reservoir Resha Centre, the $10,000 for the race platform, that's two, $50,000 for diverse, and then there are two others that I think are on the next page.
Thank you. We'll just go to the next page so we can just check we've got the right amendments, and then we'll go to you for questions, Councillor Hannan.
And then there are $15,000 for the Preston Reservoir Athletics and $15,000 for the Lakeview Tennis Club.
Through you, Mayor, because we've got the reduction twice, Councillor Greco, which is it the reduction of 50 or is it a reduction of 30? Because I think they were two different things, on the legal cost, consumables and printing costs. I think it was 50.
So, the total reduction will be 85,000, which is the 55,000, the total reduction in terms of operating cost is 85,000, and the total reduction in capital cost is 10,000. And I point out there how that difference is made up.
Thank you, Councillor Greco. I'll go to Councillor Hannan for a question.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just trying to get clarity on the practicalities of this amendment. So, two questions, actually. With A1, reduction of 85,000 by reducing legal cost, consumables and printing costs, all printing costs, I just wanted to seek management advice on how, is it implementable and how would it be done? That's the first question. The second question is, in relation to capital works, B2, what is the other projects programme?
Councillor Hannan, could you please speak up? Sorry.
In relation to, in relation to capital works programme budget, what is the other projects programme, and how would we reduce $10,000 from it? Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Hannan. And, yeah, look, I certainly had similar questions about A1 particularly. I've never seen an amendment like that. Rachel, did you want to respond to this one?
I might have a crack on the first bit, which is the operating budget. Look, it's within councils' remit to reduce the operating budget. As I said in my answer earlier, we've already cut it by $3 million this year and factored in savings of 2.4 already in next year. It's within councils' remit to ask us to make further savings. The issue that's probably problematic there is the legal costs. I think there's about 852, if I've got that memory right, 852,000 for legal costs in the expenses budget. That's split across different types of legal costs. Generally, that's planning legal costs. For councils, it's planning, property legal costs, and governance. Our governance ones have been increasing for a range of reasons. And we've got a number of unbudgeted risks that council are aware of that we're dealing with, which will almost certainly incur additional legal costs. So, we've already had a look at the legal cost budget in the executive, and we think that's underdone. It doesn't mean you can't ask us to make further savings, and we can find the 85,000, but probably the legal cost is the one that would be problematic if you specified that. The printing, we've consolidated printers in the organisation recently to try and already reduce printing costs, so reduce the numbers of printers. Our consumables is probably doable, and things like catering and those sorts of things which can be reduced.
Thank you. And I think, Councillor Hannan's second question, Rachel, so about the B2, reduction of $10,000 from the other projects programme.
So, I understand the other is drawing from the summary of the capital works programme. There is a category called other. In the detailed capital works programme, which you've, which has been shared publicly, there is one sub-program that's unallocated currently, and so I would reduce that sub-program by $10,000 if that was adopted, from $150,000 to $140,000. And that's for community building improvements. So, those are the sorts of, some of the 300 buildings we've got out there that are used by community. It would mean we would have a slightly smaller sub-program for the year ahead to respond to requests.
Thank you, Councillor Hannan. I've got what's almost a supplementary question to that. With B1, addition of $10,000 for design of a race platform at McFadson Avenue, would that be an appropriate amount of money, and what money would be needed to build the race platform?
Thank you for your question, Mayor, and through you, Mayor. To put in that platform, we estimate that it would be $10,000 to do the detailed design and then...
and then $30,000 to construct the platform.
Thank you. And a supplementary to that, is that within the Your Street, Your Say priorities currently?
Thank you for your question, ma'am. It was a part of Area B where we put forward a quick win. The community, some members of the community have raised concerns with some of the existing style of treatments and have raised, I understand, requests to put in a different type of treatment.
Thank you.
Would broadly be in alignment. Thank you.
Thank you. Have we got any further questions? Councillor Messina on the amendment.
Thank you. Through you, ma'am, I'd like to address the design. So, I just wanted to elevate that $15,000 for Preston Reservoir Athletics Club is only for the design and also the Lakeview Tennis Club is only for the design. So, has council incorporated the actual delivery of that and how far advanced? And are there any clubs who have other lighting issues? A priority on the list, please.
Thank you, councillor Messina. So, it's a question about if we were to bring forward or add the $15,000 for the Preston Reservoir Athletics Club and add $15,000 for Lakeview, what does that mean for, you know, what would that mean for the delivery of that project, et cetera?
At this stage, council doesn't have funds in its longer-term Capital Works Programme for the construction of those. And it's perhaps surprising, but constructing lighting at sports fields is usually really expensive, several hundred thousand dollars at least.
Thank you. And it's not in the forward plan currently. Thank you. Councillor Messina.
To address the need for others, are there other others lightings that are more quintessential based on our plan?
Thank you. Rachel, do you know, could we touch on perhaps the outdoor sport infrastructure framework? And is there other priorities?
Through you, ma'am, I can talk quickly to the Lakeview Tennis. I'd need to take the other on notice. But the upgrade of existing lighting on Courts 1 to 4 is number four on the Outdoor Sports Infrastructure Framework's Sports Lighting Priority List that was updated by officers in 2022. Additional lighting is not listed in OISF, but officers recognise the lighting provision is poor at Lakeview. Apologies. And in terms of the Preston Resa Athletics Club, this lighting project is number 11 on the Sports Lighting Priority List.
Thank you. So, to clarify, yes, there are other lighting projects that are higher up on the list. Do we have further questions on the amendment? No. Okay. Oh, sorry, councillor Lawrence, you've got questions?
Yes, I've just got a question regarding reduction of legal costs. And obviously, there's highlighted legal costs in operational budgets and in budgets connected to planning, CEO, councillors, governance, that kind of thing. But I just wanted to ask, in terms of legal cost savings, would conveyancing costs in laneway sales be another area for legal cost savings?
Rachel, did you want to take that one?
We certainly use legal support in conveyancing, but I'm not aware of efficiencies that could be gained in that function.
I'd just clarify, ma'am, if I may. It was 832, not 852. I was at by 20,000 in my memory, apologies. It depends what's put to that expense line. Sometimes I, you know, we'd have to take that on notice to check it, but it might be conveyancing going to that expense line. It might be entitled legal, but it might be other. Depends if you, sometimes you're paying for your conveyancer through the lawyer, et cetera, et cetera. So, we'd have to take that on notice. It might be part of it, it might not be.
Thank you. Did you have further questions, councillor Lawrence? Thank you. Any last questions? No. Okay. Councillor Greco, would you like to speak to your amendment? And you do have five minutes.
Thank you, May Newton. I hope I could do justice to this in the five minutes that I've been allocated. There are five amendments that I am seeking, and I'll go through them one by one so that I can explain the context in relation to them. I believe one of the most important ones is the RLC, the Reservoir Leisure Centre. In the budget, there's nothing in the budget that actually moves along the Reservoir Leisure Centre redevelopment. So, by putting $80,000 to develop a concept plant helps us to move that project along and keep it on the radar. And I think it's important that we put $80,000 in the budget for that. And the reasons, we've gone through the reasons, I think everyone generally agrees that we need to build a new Reservoir Leisure Centre. We can't wait to 2035 to consider this issue. And the population is outstripping us, so we need to actually act on this and put it on the radar and on the agenda. In relation to the Athletics Club, again, there's...
Sorry, councillor Greco, just a pause. Thank you, Anthony. I forgot to ask for a second. And I also, I think as well, I didn't ask if it was acceptable to the Moover and Secondar. So, I'll just get you to pause for a second and pause the clock, please. So, my first question, and I do apologise for this, councillors, is it acceptable, these amendments to the Moover and Secondar?
No.
Thank you. Councillor Greco, you're moving the amendments, but do I have a second for the amendments? Councillor De Wychratus, thank you. Councillor Greco, please go ahead.
Thank you for that. In relation to the Athletics Club, again, this is to do some design work, electrical design work. It's a unique facility. We have a very underutilised, high-quality facility. But unfortunately, as we've seen, we've just gone through the shortest day of the year and that facility cannot be used in the winter months, basically after 5.30 or 6 o'clock, which is a real shame. Why I put this on the agenda, I recognise that it's number 11 on the list, but there's been a huge demand from the users and the community, and particularly women and children who seek to use the facility and can't use it because of, in winters, basically out of action. In relation to the Tennis Club, again, this Tennis Club is really underserviced. The facilities really need an overhaul, not to mention the club rooms. I've been there many, many times. It's like, you know, sort of going back to the 70s, if you like. I think a film crew could actually use that to make a movie out of the 70s, out of that Tennis Club. And it really needs lighting and upgrade. There's a huge demand. There's a huge population increase in the north of Bell Street, and we really need to increase. It's only $15,000 to do the design work. And if we do the design work, then it enables the future council to consider on how to prioritise that in the future, in the future capital assets and work. Also, in relation to diverse, we've had a presentation here from the diverse manager. Our community is suffering from cost of living crisis. We know that in the city of Darabin, there are huge pockets of poverty in our city. We talk a lot about this in terms of food safety, in terms of food security and all sorts of issues associated with certain pockets of our city where the socio-economic demographics highlight high disadvantage. We're seeing this more and more. It's not only a Darabin issue, it's particularly a north-south divide, I would say, but it's also a national issue. We, as a council, as a tier of government, have a responsibility to provide some relief to the most needy in our community. That's our job, councillors. That's why I feel that I'm here as a councillor in order to assist the most needy in our community. So, $50,000 is not a big ask of the legal costs or in relation to other expenses, printing and things. What would be more important, more stationary or helping more deserving people who are doing it tough at the moment? And the last $10,000 worth of Capital Works, as has been mentioned through the Your Street, Your Say project a couple of years ago in McFadson Avenue, that was highlighted as a priority area that needed to be addressed. What the community got as a treatment was, I believe, a poor form of treatment in relation to traffic coming. What they got were awkward situated bollards and also very awkward and noisy rubber speedhums. What the community has been demanding, again, comparing this to the southern part of our city, is a raised platform that will create less noise, be aesthetically more pleasing, and also would avoid having bollards. This should have been done right at the outset. And there's a bit of a, the community has been a bit disillusioned by the outcome and by the form of treatment that has been applied. And I think that this needs to be rectified. And I think that we could do the design work, present that to the community, and then in the future budget, again, allow the new council to decide to go ahead and put some bitumen form of Raze platform, which lifts the amenity of the area and at the same time solves the safety issue of the street. I'll leave it at that. And last thing I would say, can I propose, ma'am, through you, whether we can actually vote on each one singly to make it easier for councils? They may agree with some and may disagree with others. Thank you.
Yes, councillor Greco, I'm happy to vote on these amendments line by line. Councillor De Wychratus, go to your second.
I'll reserve my right, ma'am. Thanks.
Thank you. Have we got any speakers against the amendments? Councillor Hannon?
Thank you, ma'am. And thanks councillor Greco for bringing forward these amendments. I, look, in principle, they're all things that I would want to support if budget was available. However, we've just heard from our CEO that budget is certainly very tight in the general community and there's a lot of, a number of measures in this budget to provide additional supports to the community already. You know, there's concessions, there's increased, there's supports for housing and homelessness. We made a small additional increase to emergency food relief in the draft budget. So, we already have included some measures to address the hardship faced in the general community. There's also the financial responsibility required for council as an organisation, which requires making a lot of hard choices and we're not in a position to do everything that we'd want to do. I note here, a number of these amendments are talking, are putting forward planning, so designing, design projects and concept design. In the case of RLC, absolutely, we acknowledge that, and we've had a previous motion to redevelop RLC in the future. It's still some years away. We're just not at the stage of starting that concept design in the next year. In relation to most of the other projects, again, there is no substantial budget in the next few years for a couple of those, three of those, I think, two of those. And it's just not the right time to be starting the design work. So, I'm sorry to not support this item. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hannon. And do we have other speakers to the item? Councillor Lawrence?
Yes, I'm happy to support most of the items that have been put up here. And in particular, I appreciate that a number of savings have been identified going through here to address maybe some of the most well-off people in the city of Darabin, or our many contracted lawyers, I'd say, some of the richest people, and boost $50,000 for diverse. The actual material aid need, as the homeless crisis gathers pace, as neoliberalism continues, is actual food, shelter, clothing for people. I was happy to be involved in giving out $400,000 worth of clothes, new clothes in Darabin through charity I'm associated with, and I know diverse does a similar job and task. So, that's very good. As I mentioned, you know, I often marvel at the conveyancing costs of a small lane eclipse the conveyancing costs of a million-dollar house. And I just think that some of our lawyer community and lawyer contractors can sharpen pencils around that. So, I only note in terms of meeting the neglected area of northwest reservoir, this plugs quite a few holes in sports infrastructure, but only actually eliminates $10,000 of other projects. And so, I'm sort of happy to go really with nearly all of it here because I don't think an extra $10,000 shifted from below Bell Street up to reservoir is going to change the world, but I also think it shouldn't alarm the world.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence. Do we have further speakers on the amendment? No further speakers. Okay, I'll go back to councillor De Wychratus, Bill, to second.
Nothing further to add, ma'am?
Thank you. And councillor Greco, would you like to use your write-off reply? Oh, sorry, it's an amendment. You don't have, let me just check. Sorry, just confirming, there's no write-off reply. So, I'll just close off the debate on the amendment as well. I think unfortunately for me, we did hear about the Preston Reservoir Athletics Club lighting design and Lakeview Tennis Club lighting design, that these are, I think, four and 11 on the list. So, we have an outdoor sports infrastructure framework for a reason, and that is to look very closely at merit-based, at which projects need lighting first. So, I can't support that. And I'm very aware, as Peter and staff talked about, that legal costs are going up. So, for me, I don't think that this can be managed by reducing legal costs. So, I'll be against some of these amendments, but we will go line by line. So, councillors...
May Newton, if I may, just to remind you, as per the governance rules, just ask your discretion in terms of voting on each item individually.
Councillor Greco, I've already confirmed that I will go line by line for the voting. Please take your seat. Councillors, we will go to the vote on the amendment. And we are going to go line by line for vote. So, we first have 6A to the operating projects budget. We have one, reduction of $85,000 by reducing legal costs, consumables or printing costs. All those in favour? That's councillor De Wychratus, councillor Greco, councillor Lawrence. All those against? Councillor Hannon, councillor Rennie, councillor Williams, councillor Messina and councillor Newton and councillor McCarthy. That item is lost. We'll go to A2, addition of $80,000 for the Reservoir Legislative Concept Design Project. All those in favour? Councillor De Wychratus, councillor Greco, councillor Williams and councillor Lawrence. All those against? That's councillor Hannon, councillor Rennie, councillor McCarthy, councillor Messina and councillor Newton. That item is lost. We've got A3, addition of $50,000 for the diverse complex support programme. All those in favour? That's councillor De Wychratus, councillor Greco, councillor Lawrence. All those against? That's councillor Hannon, councillor Rennie, councillor Williams, councillor Messina, councillor McCarthy and councillor Newton. That item is lost. We have 6 for addition of $15,000 for Preston Reservoir Athletics Club lighting design. All those in favour? Councillor De Wychratus and councillor Lawrence and councillor Greco. All those against? Councillor Hannon, councillor Rennie, councillor McCarthy, councillor Messina and councillor Newton. All those abstaining, councillor Williams. That item is lost. 6.5, addition of $15,000 for Lakeview Tennis Club lighting design. All those in favour? Councillor De Wychratus, councillor Greco, councillor Williams and councillor Lawrence. All those against? Councillor Hannon, councillor Rennie and councillor McCarthy, councillor Messina and councillor Newton. That item is lost. 6B, we have to the Capital Works Programme Budget. B1, addition of $10,000 for design of a Raze platform at McFadson Avenue. All those in favour? Councillor De Wychratus, councillor Greco, councillor Williams, councillor Messina, councillor Lawrence. All those against? That's councillor Hannon, so I'm getting tired of names. Councillor Hannon, councillor Rennie, councillor McCarthy and councillor Newton. That item is passed. And B2, reduction of $10,000 from the other projects programme. All those in favour? Councillor, that is carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. So, we'll go back to the substantive item. Councillor De Wychratus?
Ma'am, I have an amendment.
Thank you. We'll get your amendment on screen. Thank you. We'll get your amendment on screen. Council De Witterer, is this your amendments?
Yes, but I wanted to raise them separately. So Amendment 2 to be raised later.
So you don't want to group your amendments?
That's right. I already sent an email to governance and they said it was okay.
Okay, so you're just doing the item about the Aboriginal Women's and Girls' Sports Centre? Okay, is that acceptable to the mover and second up? No. Okay, do we have a second for the amendments? Okay, the amendment has lapsed. So will we go on to, does anyone else have any, did you want to go on to your next amendment?
Yes, sure. Second of which amendment?
Council Greco, I gave you the opportunity.
I think Council Greco has hearing impairment sometimes.
It's fine. Council Greco.
Sorry, Mayor, I didn't hear what you said. So if you could speak a little bit louder, that'd be great.
Said, is there a second for the amendment?
I think I said, yes, I'm happy to second the amendment.
Go ahead, Council De Witterer, please speak.
Thank you, Mayor, through you. I'm raising this amendment because I believe it's important that council supports.
Excuse me, Mayor, are we able to ask questions before the mover speaks?
Yes, you may. Take your seat, Council De Witterer. Yes, please go ahead, Council Messina.
De Witterer, but I think I'd like to ask some questions. Just in relation to this, and I understand the purpose of this amendment, should council consider the $200,000 in this year's budget and then the $800,000 supplement in the 25, 26, 26, 27 budget? They're operational, so we will be cutting our operational services, which means childcare, aged care services, waste, to incorporate that. Is that correct? Because it's not going to be part of capital because they're grants.
Thank you, Council Messina. I'll go to Peter. Did you want to respond?
Thank you, Mayor. It would actually be your, it would be your operating projects budget. So again, that's sitting at about $2.5 million for those years. So you'd be pre-committing, you'd need to find savings of $200 in this year, which is the 2.3 million you've got in your papers tonight. You'd have to take $200 out to get a balanced budget. And then you'd be pre-committing a grant of $400,000 out of that $2.5 for the following year and then the year after that to make the whole million up. So the other way to do it, though, is to, if you wanted to top up your operating project, then you'd have to reduce your, your general operating budget to do that, which would result in potentially some impacts on services. But as the four-year plan stands, this would come out of the operating project budget. So it would replace some of these other things, the type of things that you're debating tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a supplementary question, Mayor. So in relation to, so council will have to reduce service deliveries in aged care perhaps, or waste collection to fund these. My next question is in relation to, do we have a project timeline? And has the state, because my understanding is that there is money that is not needed. Has the state and federal government committed any further funds? And can we please correct that in relation to $10 million surplus? Because that initiates that council has $10 million in the bank.
Thank you, Council Messina. I think it'll need to come up as an amendment to amend six, that first line. But I will go to Kylie for the response.
Through you, Mayor. The Aboriginal Needs Advancement League is currently talking to a number of partners, so a number of levels of government in terms of seeking support for this important project. I'm not aware yet of the outcome of those discussions, but I know that they are being incredibly active in those discussions. In terms of the timeframe of the project, it'll be dependent upon securing the funding required to complete the project. I'm not sure that the Aboriginal Needs Advancement League have talked publicly about the amount of money required to complete the project. So I probably wouldn't disclose this, that amount in this meeting tonight without checking with the league first.
Thank you, Kylie. And there is a further meeting coming up. I think I can say that with some key stakeholders. Council Lawrence?
Yeah, just through you, Mayor Newton, I just wanted to try and understand the amount of $200,000 and $400,000 is for running the centre, not completing the centre or building the centre?
And also to confirm, this would be $400,000 in each year, right? So it's $800,000, not $400?
Through you, Mayor. So the money that is being requested is to build or to aid the construction of the facility, to put alongside funding that might come from other sources. My read of point B is that it is seeking a commitment from council for $400,000 in 25, 26, and again in 26, 27. So the total amount of AMB would be $1 million.
Through you, Mayor. Can I just clarify for Council Lawrence? Because it's not our asset, it has to be a grant. So it can't come, it wouldn't come from our capital budget.
And that's worth confirming that this is not council land and hence it would have to be operating.
Just a supplementary question. Yeah, and notwithstanding it's not a council asset. We have spent $800,000 on the Oval previously. Is any of that $200, or sorry, $1 million in total able to be funded through open space levies?
Rachel, did you want to take that one?
The short answer is no, largely because it's not a council site.
Thanks, Rachel. Did you have further questions? Council Messina?
We haven't addressed the, I'm going to raise a point of order, 10.1G misleading, given there is $10 million in surplus. Can I please have Council De Witterer address that? Should this be passed by council, it's actually a false misleading statement.
Council Messina, as Chair, what I would suggest is, there's a motion that's been put forward. And I think what I would suggest is that a councillor could amend that. So currently it says, given there is over $10 million in surplus. But a councillor could amend what that says currently. I think that could be a way forward.
Mayor, I note that publicly the amounts, and we've had it, heard it here today from officers, it's $10,277,000. Would you like me to amend it to that?
This statement imposes that council has $10 million surplus sitting in the bank and we're looking for a million dollars to be spent.
The De Witterer, I'll get you to resume your seat. Council Messina, I do understand the question and Peter, our CEO, might be able to help.
Through you, Mayor. Can I just suggest you put the word operating surplus in your amendment, Council De Witterer? Because that's an accounting term, which is the amount you're referring to. So it's the, it's the, I believe it's the operating surplus. If you were to put that as, is that correct, Trinny? Or I just get, because you're referring to a amount in the budget papers, which isn't... I think the word surplus is used three or four different ways. So I think if we were to be precise, that would be factual. I'll just get the term from my CFO. Was it operating surplus that Council De Witterer?
It's operating budget surplus, as noted.
So I think you would describe it as operating budget surplus in capitals. It would be accurate and factual.
Thank you. Are you willing to put that forward as an alternate motion, Council De Witterer?
I'm happy to just add in the word operating surplus.
Operating budget surplus, okay. Governance, can we get those, that wording? Thank you. Great. Certainly a question for me about this. Absolutely take your point, Council Messina. Could we just re-clarify what this would mean? So we heard before about that it's called a surplus, but it's really allocated to things in future. Rach, could you clarify what the impact would be if we were to reallocate a million dollars?
So through you, Mayor. At the moment, I would interpret what's on the screen as noting the surplus. However, I wouldn't take it as direction to use that surplus for those funds. So as Peter described earlier, those outer years, we would essentially pre-allocate part of the operating projects budget. So you'd be taking it from inside your operating budget envelope. And then depending on the outcome of your decisions tonight, councillors, the $200,000 that you're talking about this year is probably the biggest question I would have as to whether that would essentially reduce the surplus or whether it would be offset by other reductions.
Thank you. And I will just note before we move on that we did have multiple submissions from sports clubs on council land about the upgrades that they might need on council land as well. Do we have further questions before we go to the amendment? Okay, Council De Witterer, I'll go to you as move on.
I'm raising this amendment because I believe it's important that council supports the Aboriginal Needs Advancement League, who came to us for assistance to build a Victorian-first Aboriginal Women's and Girls' Sports and Wellness Centre in Thornbury on the traditional lands of the Warundurie. The AAL and the Fitzroy Stars have asked council to further our commitment to reconciliation and support opportunities to be gender responsive and ensure gender justice and equality by committing funds for the women's centre, which aligns with our council plan for self-determination and reconciliation. Given that there is currently no nationally significant space dedicated to Aboriginal women and girls, this centre is said to be, become a powerful symbol for truth-telling, justice, healing and a safe space for Aboriginal women and girls in the Inner North, where many First Nations people and families reside. So I ask all councillors to please support this small amendment, given our surplus, our, sorry, our operational, our operating budget surplus for the 24, 25 budget, which is $10,277,000. And because this budget, this project is important and will provide much-needed infrastructure to meet the growing demands for Aboriginal women and girls in the Inner North. Thank you.
Thank you, Council De Witterer. I do need to make a point of clarification, though. As Rachel pointed out, the, this would not come from the $10 million surplus. So I'll go to Council Greco as second up.
Mayor Newton, I reserve my right to speak.
Sure. Would anyone like to speak against the item? Council Messina?
I'm happy to take the flak on social media. I'm happy to do that. This is an important project, but I just want to take away the fact of what this means. There's a misleading statement that we have $10 million to spend. And I can see what's going to happen on social media. We have $10 million, but that's what this statement says. And we're not giving a million dollars to the AA League. That is actually incorrect. So I need to voice that. Number one, what this means is that we're going to be using funds from our operating budget in the future years. What that means is that we're going to be reducing waste. We're going to be reducing possibly, I'll use the word possibly, maternal health services, aged care services, disability services, all the other general services. We don't even have money from the state and federal government to finish this project. This is an important project. I want to see this project delivered. This statement is false. Think about what's being sent in this chamber. It is false statement. This is no more than grandstanding. Do I want that being delivered? Yes. Does everybody in this room want this to be delivered? Absolutely. But please be real.
Thank you, Council Messina. Would anyone else like to speak to the item? I'll go to Council McCarthy and I'll go to Council Lawrence.
Thanks, Mayor. I've held back asking a question in relation to this because I think actually councillors have already had the opportunity to ask these questions. This is not the first time that this has come up. I would be confident that every single councillor fully supports this project. I have no question there whatsoever. What I find disappointing is, and I think Council Lena, Council Lena Messina has articulated the issue very well, is that the way in which this is constructed gives the impression that there is money available for this project from council's current and future budgets, which is actually incorrect. It could be the case. In fact, the council could make this decision tonight and make this allocation, in which case it then has to have a very hard set of discussions and decisions around things that will then not occur, which are currently programmed to occur. I am hopeful, and I was quietly confident that I think the state and federal governments will do the right thing and step up in this space and bring the money that is required. I hope the council will continue, as I know the mayor has, to actively advocate to other levels of government to bring the funding that is so desperately needed for this project. And it is a really important project and a significant project that we want to see in the city. Council has already made a contribution to this project and I think will continue to contribute in various ways. But creating the impression that there is somehow a million dollars available for this project at this point in time is incorrect. It's misleading. And if the intention here is to engage in, as Council Messina, Lena Messina has suggested, some sort of social media reputation damaging activity, then I'd be really disappointed. In the other case, I can't support this motion.
Thank you, Councillor McCarthy. Council Lawrence, would you like to speak to the amendment?
Yes, happy to speak to the amendment. I'm probably going to abstain on this, so I'm not sure I'm meant to be speaking or not. But the point is, it's, it's, I know the words operating and English has a lot of similar words, all sound the same. But in effect, it's a bit like when you've got a boat going over some reefs. You can't actually have, in a $220 million budget, a small operating surplus. You get very close to hitting the reefs. Now, the reality is that $10 million, a lot of it's already tied up. A lot of it actually can't be just grabbed as cash. And also, we know our rates come in funny lumps. So it's, yeah, I mean, this council's been so fat with cash for so long. But most councils in Victoria have to manage their surplus because they'll scrape the bottom of the boat during the year. So that's imaginary. However, committing a million dollars to this project is something well worth looking at. However, the constraints, as we've heard, is that it will be a million out of the operational budget. So I could consider this, if it was well considered, like Council Greco's previous motion, which identified taking money off lawyers and giving it to the most vulnerable people in the city. So it was balancing. That's why I supported all of it. So what this motion lacks is thought and consideration and basic budgeting. Happy to consider it, but we need to identify where the million dollars is going to come in this budget, 25, 26 and 20, 27, in terms of operational budgets. Now, anyone who knows anything of the history of Darabin, we've tried to do everything, run every surplus, and actually, we're over-operating. We've got savings which need to make on operational. It's not a fat operational budget. It needs to be tidied up. And plus, we've got building maintenance problems. So yes, what it's missing is the actual cuts to make it work.
Thank you, Council Lawrence. Do we have further speakers to this item? Council Williams?
I too also have concerns in the way this amendment has actually been written. My concerns is that this council has been put in a situation from a legacy that goes on for multiple years, over a long period of time, where operational, our budgets have been squeezed and they've gone from one section and councillors have moved them to other sections just to ensure that their pet projects get up in their particular ward. What I find is very concerning, as other previous councillors have already pointed out this evening regarding this particular item, is implying that we do have the money in our account, but that money is actually for our assets. There for our maintenance, there for our buildings that have been let go over a number of years. And we need to really tighten our bow to ensure that those assets are being maintained because they have not been maintained. And we are looking down the barrel that if those assets are not getting maintained, us as a council are going to have to borrow money just to maintain our assets. We already know the impact that that's had on things like the Reservoir Leisure Centre, on the Northcote Town Hall, on just multiple assets that we have here on council. If we continue going down this track, as I said, that we will not be able to continue to do. that we will not be able to continue to do any roadworks and repairs, footpaths, and other basic things that we are meant to do as a council. I feel it's very disappointing to, that council who come, councillors that get voted here on council, we get, we are an elected body. We have a responsibility to ensure that our budgets and, that are actually, our budgets are fulfilling, but also that we not have a legacy that our previously council has done to us. We need to bite the bullet, and we can change that narrative, and we can change it here tonight. But looking at this amendment, that's not changing it. That's actually making us in a worse situation that we're in. That's why we have monitors here for this particular reason. This has been ongoing. The legacy needs to change. The narrative needs to change. Councillors, when we're voted in, we're voted individually from our ward, but when we're voted in together and we're meant to work collectively together, we look after the whole city, all of it, not just parts of it, and not just your ward.
That's time. Thank you councillor Williams. Do we have any further speakers on the amendment? No. Okay, so I'll close the debate on the amendment there. Oh, sorry. Sorry, I'll just double check. Councillor Greco, you were the second. Did you want the opportunity to speak to the amendment?
Thank you mayor. Look, and I thank the contribution of councillors. Look, the AAL is one of the most important relationships that we have in the city of Darabin. It's one of the oldest and one of the most significant organisations, not only in Victoria, but in all of Australia, in terms of the plight of Aboriginal people. What this money represents, if we think about it in terms of, we have a budget revenue of over $200 million. $1 million represents less than half, half a percent, less than half a percent of our total revenue going towards the Aboriginal community. We talk lots about the Aboriginal community. We wear lapels about the Aboriginal community. We do all sorts of things, we say all sorts of things. But when the rubber hits the road and when money has to be delivered, we get cold feet, councillors. Now, if we want to stick by our word and actually deliver to the Aboriginal community, and they've made a plea to us, we need to act. I understand that there's going to be a roundtable discussion on the 3rd of July, and we're around to have a discussion with a lot of government departments. We need to go there, not empty-handed, with empty words, but we need to go there with a commitment that we're willing to sit at the table together with other government departments and front up and to see, to make that project work. It's, it's very important. And the final point that I'll make, a lot of people have been talking about the operating surplus and things like that, I think there's a bit of confusion, councillors. Giving $200,000 this year will not affect the existing services that we provide this year. It would not affect the existing services we provide this year. 200,000, the 10.1, 10.2 million dollar surplus applies to money that we put aside for future years, as has been mentioned.
That's time councillor Greco.
So I'll just finish on this. So it's important to understand that we need to therefore prioritise what we do in future years. Do we want to prioritise the Aboriginal community, as we all say that we want to? Or do we just want to give them nice words and not a financial commitment in real terms? Thank you.
And what about the Reservoir Leisure Centre? What about other projects that we've been working on for years?
You're out of order councillor Williams. So I will now close the debate on that amendment, and we'll go to the votes. So all those in favour? That's councillor Demetriadis and councillor Greco, all those against, and all those abstaining. Councillor Hannan, councillor Rennie, councillor Williams, councillor McCarthy, councillor Messina, councillor Lawrence, and councillor Newsham. That amendment is lost, so we'll go back to the substantive item. Councillor Demetriadis, do you have a further amendment? We'll get that on screen. Is this your amendment councillor Demetriadis? Councillor McCarthy, did you want to declare an interest or a conflict here?
Thanks mayor. I will declare a conflict, and I'll declare a conflict in relation to point 6A. Sorry, I wasn't aware, I haven't seen this amendment until just now mayor. So otherwise, I would have declared this earlier.
Great, can I ask a point of clarification then? So this amendment is in three parts. Would you like us to separate this out so we could deal with 6A in part? And then we could come back, would you like to come back after we do a 6A?
I would like to be able to participate in the other two items mayor.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. So councillor McCarthy, I'll just ask you to leave the room for 6A, and we'll get you back after we've dealt with that part of the motion.
Thanks mayor. I will just, just to be correct in the procedure mayor, I'll just declare that I have a conflict in relation to 6. A, and that is that it refers to the property known as Two Wing Grove Street, Elphington. And I have a conflict due to my employment in relation to that site. Thank you mayor.
Thank you. We'll just wait for councillor McCarthy to leave the chamber. Thank you. Before we start debate, I've got a question about this amendment. So it has the wording noting that money can be taken from the $10,000, $10,277,000 surplus. Can I please get clarification on if that's possible, Rachel? That the money can be taken from the $10,277,000 surplus?
So if there were no offsetting reductions, items A and C would reduce that surplus. Item B, because it looks on the face of it like a capital programme, would reduce the cash surplus but not the operating surplus.
Thank you. And I'll just check for, have we got any other questions about 6A? No, okay. Councillor Demetriadis, would you like to speak? And please note that we're just talking about 6A, so that we can then get councillor McCarthy back in for B and C.
Sure, but in terms of making it clearer, sorry, I'm not speaking yet. It says that there's $75,000 that we can put back into the budget, so.
Oh, sorry. And I'm so sorry.
I still have a question.
Sorry, just one second. So we'll just go back a step before we go back to questions. Is this acceptable to the mover and the second? Councillor Rennie, is this amendment acceptable? No, thank you. And so now we're back on, before we go back to your question, do I have a second for 6A? We've got councillor Greco, thank you. And councillor Demetriadis, you've got a question on your own amendment?
Well, it's not necessarily a question, but it's just a point of clarification. So it's actually just $22,000 that's required for this whole amendment, because there is $75,000 that can go back into the budget. So we can make that clearer just to get, you know, alleviate a lot of the confusion about this surplus thing. So it's just that 20, so noting that $22,000 can be taken, can be used, or whatever the wording can be.
Are you saying you, are you asking a question? What's your question councillor Demetriadis?
It's not a question, it's a point of clarification that I'm happy to amend the, I'm happy to add in the, those words in the amendment for further clarification for everyone.
So I think you need my leave to amend your amendment. Let me just double check that. Councillor Demetriadis, I'm not giving you leave for the chair for that. Would you like to speak to the item?
Sure, so I guess I'm just speaking on 6A, and that's for $40,000 for broader community consultation. This actually doesn't have to come out of any budget. It's actually, currently, it can be within the envelope of what the budget has, assuming that all councillors want to vote it in. And the reason I'm actually standing here tonight is to raise this is because it's been, it was a community submission that asked council to undertake broader community consultation of Two Wing Grove Street in Elphington. As we know, this particular site has gained large community interest over the years, and the community want to be involved and have a say from the beginning phases of the master planning process. I've personally heard some amazing ideas about creating a world-class public space at this site, combining ethical, commercial investment with community ecological and social benefits that will be a working example of addressing the climate emergency. I believe it's important that we give the community this opportunity, just like what council did with the Northcote Aquatic Centre redevelopment and many other projects before it. So like I said, I just want to reiterate that we don't actually have to put money into the budget for this one. This can actually just, as long as councillors voted on it, we can actually just accept it within the, within the budget envelope, and no additional funding is required.
Thank you councillor Greco. Would you like to speak a second?
May I reserve my right to speak?
Sure. Have we got any speakers in opposition? Councillor Hannan?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you may councillor Williams.
Sorry, but councillor Demetriadis actually stipulated and said that this doesn't come from any budget. Can I get clarification, like where's it coming from?
Thank you councillor Williams. I think that's a useful question of clarification, and I'll go to.
There's people online who are watching, so I don't know if one of our officers can answer it. That's all.
Yes, and I think certainly the understanding I had was that if you were putting something in, you'd be taking something out, but I'll go to Peter.
Thank you, three mayor. Item five noted the things that you took out of the draft budget, and there was $75,000 unallocated, so councillor Demetriadis is correct. I think she's referring to allocating 40 of the $75,000 unallocated operating projects budget to this project. So that's just to clarify, I think, the statement that councillor Demetriadis made. Yeah, so.
Thank you councillor Williams.
Sorry mayor. So council, you have $75,000 unallocated. If you, if you put things in, more than $75,000, then you're going to have to start taking things out to have a balanced budget.
Thank you. So councillor Greco, you've declined to speak a second currently. And councillor Hannan, you're speaking against.
Thank you mayor. Just on the point made just now, I'd like to foreshadow that I also have an amendment proposed, which has a number of other suggested uses for that unallocated funds, and all councillors are aware of that. So, you know, it's a timing question as to at what point, you know, which, which one, which item gets voted on, and which to make up those unallocated funds. This, to the, go to the stamps, to the substantial item here of 6A. This was something, we've actually had this debate at the, at the draft budget stage. But I understand, you know, it's, it's within councillors' abilities to bring forward the same item again. And I'll just say what I said at the, at the draft stage was that we look forward to the redevelopment options for Two Wing Grove Street, Elphington. In the, in the draft budget stage, I was very pleased to put forward additional funding to go towards the initial works, so it's a feasibility assessment, really just looking at what's possible on the land, given known contamination and other issues. And to then enable an expression of interest process. There is absolutely the intention to bring the community into, to have a really important say on how that area is used. There have been some wonderful ideas put forward, and I'd really love to see those ideas being developed, as councillor Demetriadis has raised. But there is a, it's not necessary to go to the community consultation at this stage. And, you know, it's, it's not something that we can fit into the budget. So that's why I won't be able to support this. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have further speakers on the amendment? 6A? No, okay. Councillor Greco, go back to you on 6A. Would you like to speak a second?
Yes, very briefly. Look, I've seconded this amendment, and I'm happy to second this. There is $75,000 of operating income available in the budget. And this is a request for $40,000. All my amendments were sadly knocked out by councillors. So that leaves $75,000 that's available. I think this initiative of $40,000 for broader community consultation, it's not in my ward. It's in the southern ward of the city, and I think it would be worthwhile to go through a consultation process. There's been a lot of talk about this area. There's been a lot of community interest, and there's a lot of activity in that particular community space. I think it's important that we go through a process of community consultation, because that helps to build trust and confidence between the community and council to show that we are listening to the community about the future use of public space. And, and I think it would be a worthwhile exercise, I think. And the money spent on this goes beyond the immediate job of consultation, but it actually builds this community, trust between the community and the council. So I think we should vote to include this amount in. The money is there, there's really no excuse for councillors not to include this. It's not tipping out any other project. So I think it's a wise decision to put this in and ensure that the community has a say in their own community assets. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Greco. So you've spoken a second. I'll just close the debate myself. Councillors, I'll be voting against this item. We do have $40,000 for a feasibility study that was added in the draft budget. I believe this extra $40,000 was voted down in the draft budget. I don't think anything much has changed in the weeks since then. And I've met with stakeholders from Two Wing Grove Street. We brought some more decision-making back around the council table rather than having it under delegation with the CEO. I'm very excited about the future of this site, but we have to go step by step. And the next step is the feasibility study, which is in the draft budget now. So we'll of course do community consultation, but we do have to go step by step with this important site. So we'll close it there. And councillors, we'll go to the vote on 6A, $40,000 for broader community consultation. All those in favour? That's councillor Demetriadis and councillor Greco, and all those against. Councillor Hannan, councillor Rennie, councillor Williams, councillor Messina, and all those abstaining, councillor Lawrence. So that amendment is lost, 6A, and we'll ask for councillor McCarthy to be brought back, please, and we'll just pause. Thank you. Welcome back councillor McCarthy. So we're now speaking about 6B and C, so $50,000 to unblock the drainage at Pitcher Park, and $7,000 of project stationery to minimise stationary wastage in schools and Maggi's landfill. So let me just double check process. Great. I've just checked governance, so we're sort of going to treat this as if it's a new motion. So councillor Demetriadis, are you wanting to move 6B and C? Great. And is that acceptable to the mover and the second? No. And do we have a second for councillor Greco? Thank you. So councillor Demetriadis, I'll go to you to speak for 6B and C.
Thank you mayor, through you. I firstly want to echo the importance of council supporting the unblocking of drains at sporting ovals, such as Pitcher Park in Elphington. To be honest, I'm actually quite shocked that this type of matter has come to us in a budget submission, because I would have thought it would be automatically covered by a maintenance budget. Over the years, we've heard from many sporting clubs that this is not an uncommon occurrence, and this is because, they say, there is insufficient turf management occurring by council to prevent these sorts of incidents. And as we've heard here tonight, there is less, there is exactly the same amount of funding for maintenance of sporting clubs as there was the last year and the year before. So I think this actually has to be, I mean, the players are getting injured. There's also community members that are potentially in danger because of these unblocked drainages, and we need to be doing something about them. I believe it's council responsibility to take on this matter. It shouldn't be coming to a council budget submission, and it should just be automatically done. I feel very strongly about this, and that we need to be supporting these sort of incidences without a big debate on them. So I, hence why I've put the amendment up. So I, hence why I've put the amendment up to, for $50,000 to unblock the drainage. And secondly, the amendment also incorporates $7,000 for project stationery, which again doesn't have to come out, it is, can be within the, within the envelope of council's 75,000 that we can allocate to any projects. And this is only $7,000. So I really recommend that council actually support project stationery. It's a wonderful organisation that has, it's completely volunteer-run, not-for-profit and it works to address the climate emergency, which is what we're all about. It reduces the amount of stationery going to landfill and therefore influencing the more secular economy. So I really urge councillors to think about what is currently needed in our municipality and what the community is asking us through submissions. Instead of funding new projects that we, some have we've not even heard of, community members about. And one that immediately comes to mind is a monument to be located somewhere in Darabban that will cost us $180,000. I think we need to really look at these projects, consider the hard work that many members of our community are doing to address the climate emergency and support items that are going to improve the cost of living crisis that we're currently going through. So I urge councillors to please support these two items. I think it's important for the community.
Thank you councillor Dimitri Artis. councillor Greco, would you like to speak?
Mayor, I reserve my right to speak. Thank you.
Sure. Have we got any speakers in opposition to the amendments? councillor Rennie?
Thank you, mayor. I'm pleased that councillor Dimitri Artis and I have found something we agree on, which is that issues such as this should not come to council in the budget. If there is a problem with the drainage at Pitcher Park, I'm confident that our staff team can go and investigate what that problem is and then that will fall onto the maintenance schedule along with drainage problems, roadworks, footpath renewals and all other maintenance issues, which admittedly do compete with each other sometimes and that does mean that things have to wait their turn, but they do get done. In relation to project stationery, this is an extraordinary initiative by community members. It's absolutely fantastic. They saved hundreds of kilos of unwanted school waste and distributed it across the municipality. I know that projects such as this are eligible for the council community grants programme and I think that we should not use the council budget process to bypass the council community grants programme. I think it sets a really unhelpful precedent and I would encourage this and any other project that requires this type of amount of money for an extremely worthy community endeavour, they are likely to be very eligible for community grants programme. That's the right place to get the money. We've already allocated that. I hope they've applied and I hope they're successful. But once again, those decisions are outside of the hands of councillors. They're made by a panel of staff and that's the place for funding for these type of initiatives. I'll be voting against the amendment.
Thank you councillor Rennie. Do we have further speakers on B and C of the amendment? councillor Lawrence?
Yes, thank you, mayor Newton. Yeah, look, I won't be supporting this. You know, I'm concerned with the optics of this, how these additions without subtractions are flowing. And, you know, I would, I would, you know, request councillors, think about the context. When you ask for a million dollars in operational budget, when there's only, you know, there's only 75,000 available and we land on the feet of First Nations, a presentation of defeat on a project that we've, a place that, you know, Aboriginal advancement league is a place that we've funded greatly over many, many years. And we facilitated the handing over 99-year leases and various other things. So it's not a place we're not committed to. So suddenly, when we get to non-Aboriginal people, the 75 grand can patch up a little problem there that maybe is imaginary, that can be fixed. You know, there's this issue of, this city sometimes of First Nation problems and First World problems competing. And this is a little bit getting into ridiculousness. So I am very, be happy to see the 75,000 return to First Nations project that people say they so care about or to the citywide adjustments that councillor Hannon has already sent out to us. So yes, I'm happy to spend the 75 that's surplus, but I'd like to see it spent on First Nations or on citywide projects. So I won't support this.
Thank you councillor Lawrence. Do we have further speakers to the item? No. councillor Greco, would you like to speak a second?
Thank you, mayor Newton. Again, there is $75,000 that council has at its disposal to allocate to other projects. I think the unblocked drainage at Pitcher Park, we know that flooding is a, is a big issue that has emerged as a result of Melbourne Water's redrawing of their flooding maps. And I think that this will be a, very much a proactive type of initiative in regards that, given that the money is there and given what councillor Lawrence has just said, that really the money should have gone to much more prioritised initiatives like supporting the Aboriginal advancement league with their initiative. But that's gone, that's been lost. I have to respect that decision. And, but given that the money is now available, I would be inclined to support this. In Malaysia, to the $7,000 for the project stationery. I think it's, we had a presentation here as part of the submissions, quite innovative and enthusiastic project. I think it's a project that will go a long way. Yes, I do appreciate the point that it would be a project that would be more suited to our community grants application. But again, that timeline has passed. It'll be good to kickstart this group off with just a $7,000 amount and then to encourage them in future years to not allow that to be set as a precedent, to encourage it to channel the group into applying for community funds into the future. But given that they have made a submission and given that the timeline for the community grants has expired, I'm also inclined to support that. And it's only $7,000 and it easily forms part of the $75,000 that we have available. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Greco. We'll close off debate. And just from my perspective, I won't be supporting the amendments. We do have a number of line items in the capital works programme relating to drainage. As councillor Williams said before, we do need to serve the whole city. And so it really is something that should be operational to look at where those drainages, system renewals and upgrade programmes needs to be. I don't think it's ours to put $50,000 into one particular ward. So we'll close the debate there and we'll go to the vote. So all those in favour of the amendments, that's councillor Dimitri Artis and councillor Greco. All those against, that's councillor Hannon, councillor Rennie, councillor Williams, councillor McCarthy, councillor Messina, councillor Lawrence and councillor Newton. That item is lost and we'll go back to the substantive item, please, governance team. Councillor Hannon?
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to raise an amendment.
Thank you. We'll get your amendment on screen. And councillor Hannon, just before we start, do you have a preference for, are you happy for this to be voted on as one or would you like it to be line by line?
I'd prefer to be voted as one unless there's any particular things that need to be taken out.
Sure, that's fine with me. So we have, this is quite a long amendment. Is this your amendment councillor Hannon?
Just checking. Yes, thank you, mayor.
Thank you. And is this amendment acceptable to the mover and second?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. And councillor McCarthy?
Yes, it is, ma'am.
Thank you. That now becomes the substantive motion. We've just made this the substantive item. councillor Dimitri Artis, is it a point of clarification? Yes, you can ask a question of clarification.
Thank you. I just wanted, I note that, sorry if you don't mind, just going up point six B. It talks about the capital works budget, bringing forward the two items. I just wanted to check, has anything been taken out of the capital works for it to actually, like has anything been changed? Like what goes in, what comes out? Is there anything that, so we're bringing this forward, is there anything that's coming out of the budget for this to come, go forward?
Thank you. Oh, that's, questions fine. I'll go to Rachel for the response.
So the way that point six B and six, sorry, BI and BII would operate is that a future year's budget would reduce. So the budget envelope in that first one would reduce in 26, 27 and that would offset the increase in 24, 25.
So councillor Dimitri Artis, I think the answer is that it's being pulled from future budgets. Councillor, sorry, that's now the substantive, so councillor Hannon, you don't need to speak to it. Oh, sorry, councillor Messina?
Sorry, ma'am, I was just thinking if we can have a look at the whole thing. Thank you.
Oh, sure. Yep. And this has been circulated. Great. I'll just leave it up there for a minute. But we will, in a minute, go back to the substantive, which now incorporates these amendments.
Mayor, if I might, just to make it easier for people who are reading on screen, it was circulated by governance services at 6:51pm. That makes it easier to catch in one line.
Thank you. Yeah, so if councillors want to check their emails for 6:51, that would be helpful. So we'll go back to the substantive item, please, Nick and Jodie. And the question now is, does anyone want to speak to the substantive item before we go to the vote for the whole budget? Councillor Hannon?
Thank you, mayor. Yes, I'd like to just speak to a few of the items in this amendment. And I want to give a lot of thanks to the, all the council staff in preparation of this budget and to other councillors for working collaboratively on some of these items to group them together. So there's a few items there. I won't go through them point by point, but just a few things to highlight. Following councillor Lawrence's statement just now is the support for First Peoples in this budget. So the amendment has just a small amount, $10,000 to start treaty discussions, treaty yarning, as requested by DAC, the Darabban Aboriginal Advisory Committee. This is really just to get started on the treaty process and I expect there'll be more to come. And I just wanted to note that there are a number of other items in this, in this budget, which are under the operating projects, which have been added in. There's $50,000 for year three implementation of the Aboriginal Action Plan. There's $43,000 to continue the new Aboriginal and Australian community grants programme. There's $70,000 to progress and strengthen the council's partnership with Wurundjeri Warung Cultural Heritage Aboriginal Corporation. And that's in addition to a concession, 100% concession for general rates for all properties owned or managed by Aboriginal Housing Victoria. So this amendment is a relatively small amount, but building on other items in the budget there. There's a number of, a couple of items there in relation to climate emergency. If I had more time, I'd want to speak to those, particularly the rewilding across the organisation and the commencement of the e-scooter trial project. I might leave those to others in the interest of time. Mayor, can I just ask for another minute, given that others' councillors have been long to speak on theirs? Thank you. I just wanted to highlight one capital works there. As we've just heard, the initial works, $100,000 for initial works on Billori Oval development, which is being brought forward from 2026, 27. This amendment follows a budget submission that we heard and I'd really like to thank Northcote Cricket Club as well as Northcote Park Football Club and previously the Darabban Falcons for their constructive approach to this project. As we know, Billori Oval pavilion is much loved, but unfortunately structurally in decline, a community asset and it will need to be replaced very soon in coming years. We can't afford to wait until 2026, 27 to start this work and we need to get this work progressing now. And I think a relatively small amount to get that going would be a good investment of time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Newton, I just have a point of clarification, if I may.
What is the point of clarification?
I just want to understand, in relation to what councillor Hannon has put forward, will we get an opportunity to vote on those individually or?
It's the substantive item. It's been accepted by the mover and second.
Can I request, mayor, that like the other items, could we get an opportunity to vote on what councillor Hannon has included into the budget line by line? Because there are some things there that I can support, but there are some things there that I can't support and I don't want to jeopardise my whole vote for the, you know, for the overall budget.
Let me get some governance advice. Councillor Greco, what about if we do it sort of the other way? So is there particular items that you're interested in drawing out? Is there particular items? There's a lot of items in this motion councillor Greco. Is there particular items that you're interested in voting on? So there's about, I don't know how many, there's, how many lines are there? Or just clarify how many lines there are councillor Greco. I think it might be worth doing it by exception.
Mayor?
Councillor Greco?
We respect point of order. 10.1 is contrary to the meeting rules. The meeting rules are clear that if an amendment is accepted by the mover and second, it is no longer an amendment. So there is no amendment on the floor of this chamber at the moment and therefore the time to consider individual items is passed. They are now part of the budget.
Thank you councillor Rennie.
Point of clarification, if I may. I'm fully aware of what councillor Rennie has said. I know that this is a substantive motion. In the past, when we've had a substantive motion, particularly in relation to budget items, that we pull out the budget items that could have some differences amongst councils so that we can individually vote on those and then either leave them included or exclude them and then we vote for the overall budget.
Councillor Greco, we've already had the opportunity to vote line by line on the amendments that have been put up by yourself and by councillor Dimitri Artis. But the amendments from councillor Hannon were voted, they weren't voted on. They were accepted by the mover and the second, so they became the substantive motion. So for me, I think in terms of time, we are on 8.30. We do have a large agenda. So personally, I don't think that it's practical to go line by line through each part of the substantive item when you're talking about an over $200 million budget. So look, I think, I think the cleanest thing would just be for us to vote on it as a whole.
Mayor Newton, again, just as a point, I don't want to labour the point, but could we ask our officers whether we can do that? And, because I believe we've done that in the past. It's not a new process that we're putting in place.
Councillor Greco, so I'll refer to the governance rules here. Thank you to the governance team. So we have 5.2 as a rule, which is separation of motion. 5.21 is where a motion contains two or more parts, a councillor may request at any time before a vote is taken that the chairperson put each part of the motion to the vote separately. That's what you've done councillor Greco. But 5.22 is the chair pays, soon may grant or refuse such a request at their discretion. This does not require council resolution. So I will exercise that rule, which is 5.22, and I will refuse the request due to time. So we are on 8.33. We have been through a number of amendments already and I do want to get through the full agenda tonight, councillors, as I'm sure you all do as well. So would anyone else like to speak to the substantive item? councillor Lawrence?
On this part of the budget. Just have a point of clarification on terms of the budget inclusions that we've just done. Is it possible for us to have a five-minute recess and for councillor Greco to perhaps think of an amendment where he wants to remove things that he can't support? And I'm just making this suggestion in the interests of procedural fairness and then also hopefully that we do get to a point where we have a substantive budget the majority can support.
I'm comfortable to take a five-minute adjournment and only five minutes. I'm comfortable to take a five-minute adjournment, and only five minutes, um, to seek a way forward. Thank you, deputy mayor Lawrence. Um, so we'll take a five-minute adjournment. We'll come back at eight thirty nine. Um, and councillor Greco, if you could let us know which, um, which items you want to pull out, that would be very useful. Councillors, I'll get you to resume, oh, councillors, I'll get you to resume your seats, please. Councillors, I'll get you to resume your seats. Councillors, could you resume your seats, please? Thank you. Councillors, we'll, we'll make a start. Um, so my understanding is that, uh, councillors, I'll get you to take your seats. Thank you. Um, we are running out of time. So, uh, councillors, we'll restart the meeting now at eight forty three. Um, and my understanding is that councillor Greco wants to pull out two things to vote on individually. That's fine with me. Um, so we're pulling out part sixteen of the motion, which is about the CEO, um, presentation. And we're also going to pull out the part about the location of the migration artwork. We'll do those two separately, um, and then we'll vote on the whole. Councillor McCarthy.
Sorry, ma'am. Can I just be clear? In, in the process, councillor Greco is moving two amendments. So the speaking on the substantive mo- motion hasn't completed yet until we've...
Let me check governance. So I've just saw governance advice councillor McCarthy. So what we're, where we, we are at the moment is we're speaking on the substantive motion, which includes the two things that will be pulled out for us to vote on separately. So if anyone wants to speak on the substantive item, they should do so now. We'll then go to the vote. We'll do the vote for the migration artwork location. We'll do the vote for the, um, item sixteen, and then we'll do the rest. Um, so would anyone like to speak? Councillor McCarthy, you'd like to speak on the substantive?
Okay. Thanks, ma'am. Um, I, I know that councillor Hannan, um, did make reference to this earlier in his statement, and I want, and councillor Rennie did as well, but I just want to make two really quick points, and they're really important points, ma'am. Um, the first point is that we, uh, here have the privilege as councillors to debate and discuss these items and the ability to make a decision collectively. But there's actually a group of people, both in this room and outside of this room, who have done all of the work to get us to this stage. And I want to pay respect and thank in, with absolute gratitude, um, our council officers, who have put in an enormous number of hours, um, have worked through the detail to get us to this stage, often dealing with, um, complex issues, financial management practices, accounting practices, and priorities, which we know as this councillor are driven by a set of policies and government requirements, which you won't hear about tonight in this debate, ma'am, but are really important. Um, we can stand here and we can vote for the, the eventual motion that is, is before us, but we need to do so with the full understanding that there's a lot of work that's gotten us to this stage, that in fact started last year, and in fact in years that have come past. And we have also, we are also proposing to make decisions tonight that will influence the future. Um, so, ma'am, I want to do that one point. The second point is also, um, to thank the community members, groups and organisations that have contributed to the budget process to date. If you are unsuccessful in seeing your project or initiative funded, I encourage you to keep coming back and engaging with council. Engage early, engage often, um, because we do know that sometimes it's not the year for something to be funded, but it does get on the agenda the next year. So sometimes it's about timing. And lastly, ma'am, I will close just by saying, um, that, uh, this is my last budget as a councillor, and I would just want to say that this organisation, whilst it has, like all local governments, due to rate-capping financial challenges, um, it is absolutely an organisation that is doing important work and funding good things, and I want to support the budget on that basis.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. Um, this must be your sixteenth budget. So thank you very much. And do we have any further speakers on the substantive item before we go to the vote? Councillor Seena?
Thank you. I just want to also echo what my fellow councillor, um, McCartney stated. First and foremost, I want to elevate and speak to the people, um, from A G Davis Reserve. Um, I know they've been working diligently to, and they put in a public submission for some advancements. There has been a little bit of advancement, and this amendment, I've asked and I thank councillor Hannan to incorporate that enhancement, to ensure what actually is going to be delivered, but also that this council moving forward, should, well, the new council moving forward should address public playgrounds. Um, I believe that there should be a framework that should be delivered to ensure that our public playgrounds meet those of our neighbouring municipality. There are places within our municipality that aren't at the standard that I would like, but I'm moving forward. I hope the next council does consider it. So I just want to elevate that. I also want to elevate and thank the, um, submission from the Northern Bullants, as, as well as everything else. I know that I have an amendment that I'm going to foreshadow at the next item to address this standalone club, second in the AFL, that, um, needs elevation, needs contribution, not only for Darabhan council, but also from the state and federal pop members, but in their budgets, and also from the AFL. So I want to just preempt that. I want to thank them for putting in this submission. It was a very strong. We simply don't have the funds to deliver on those, um, the much-needed asset upgrade at Preston City Oval. But I look forward to, um, next council and the evolution of a committee, um, and foreshadow that. I foreshadowed that in the next item.
Thank you, councillor Seena. Any further speakers on the substantive item? Councillor Lawrence?
Um, yes, thank you, uh, through mayor Newton. I'd like to thank, yes, the staff for the long, hard work. These budgets really, um, probably for staff, they start as soon as the first budget's finished, you know, so it's a continual, continue thing like painting the Sydney Harbour Opera, uh, Sydney Harbour Bridge. Um, for councillors, it starts to heat up, um, um, sometimes in December and certainly by January and February, and it goes on through to a draft budget debate, which you've seen, um, when officers have and community members have put up submissions and projects have come through, that goes out to a consultation process, and then we're here at the final stages. Um, the reason, um, um, what, there are budget constraints. People have heard about those budget constraints in terms of both the type of funding we've got and the type of assets and, uh, legacy issues we face. And we do tend to spend a lot of time talking about the last two hundred thousand dollars of the two hundred and twenty million dollars. But there are some really significant projects and signif- significant steps being taken in this budget in relation to open space, in relation to the challenges on sporting facilities. Um, there's some very, um, neglected, uh, sporting facilities that, um, cater for diverse groups of people, disabled people, people from emerging communities that are funded in this budget, and the following capital works funded to several million dollars. So we have spent a lot of time talking about fifty thousand dollar drainages, but there's actually, um, a lot of work still happening. Um, the, the issue, I suppose, um, is that we do start building the building blocks for future councils to rebuild our capital works. Uh, a lot of the infrastructure we're talking about with open space will have to be addressed through open space levies of development. Um, and we've got a pretty serious issue because suburbs like Reservoir with forty four thousand people, the government tell us it's going to be eighty eight thousand people. So I know we couldn't get eighty thousand for the reservoir pool, but we're going to have to think about that because the population task is being doubled for us. So that means, um, the rewilding, we're putting back in a hundred and eighty tonight because the challenge of trees is very hard when your private dwellings in Reservoir keep turning into four townhouses with hardly any garden. So our, uh, tree cover is pretty pathetic in Darabhan because twenty years of private development keeps taking us back. And so the more we plan our public areas, we keep falling behind because we're losing private gardens. So that's why the hundred and eighty is going back in there. Um, that was in amendment moved by councillor Hannan. So there's a lot of, um, important stuff that's still in this budget, and encourage residents to have a comments on it as well.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence. Any further speakers on the substantive? Councillor Greco?
May I just understand, how long have we got?
Two minutes.
Oh, go, because I just saw, um, councillor Lawrence almost three minutes.
Councillor Greco, I just need people to start to move on, just because we're already down to nine minutes per each one of the rest of the items. We are counting down, so please go ahead.
Oh, look, first of all, I'd like to thank our officers for all the number crunching that they've been doing over these, um, um, couple of months. There are some good and great things in the budget that I think need to be supported. I'm really proud that, um, I was able to advocate and achieve a two hundred dollar, um, concession for pensioners. Uh, we've bumped that up from a hundred and fifty dollars to two hundred dollars, and, um, and I'm really, really proud of that, that it's in the budget. Also proud that, um, we're spending about six million dollars of our own money in aged care, and also a total budget of about fifteen million dollars in aged care, and also the commitment that we're making in relation to kindergartners. And it's a huge commitment that council is making in regards to that. Um, in relation to the submissions, I, I note that forty two percent of the submissions were about, um, um, leisure and recreation, and that twenty four percent of the submissions were, were about, um, um, addressing disadvantage. And, um, and nearly fifty percent of the commission came from the North of Balshe. There's a consistency there, the lack of services in the north, and also the social disadvantage and economic disadvantage in the north. And that's something that needs to be. I don't think our budget really adequately addresses that. Um, so some of the disappointing things that I found, obviously, the, the not commitment to the Aboriginal Advancement League, also about, um, we still have many dormant assets in our city. in our city, like the old Reservoir Library, and the Boat House, the old Preston Police Station. Also, I'm really disappointed that the Reservoir Leisure Centre is going nowhere in the next budget. It's really not going anywhere. We have to probably wait till 2035. Hopefully, the new council will actually do something in regards to that. Also, I've got some concerns in the budget, and that is the, I think there's a clause in the budget that is really setting us up and setting up the future council for future cuts to our services, and also outsourcing some of our service delivery, and also selling off some of our assets. I've got grave concerns in regards to that, and that's something that I didn't want to see in the budget, that it's actually framing for the next budget, for the next council, that we need to sort of go down that path. I think there are other paths, and we really need to explore other paths before even considering an economic rationalist approach in this council. I didn't get elected to council to embrace and endorse an austerity-type budget in times of need, in times of need, when the community is hurting, and we need to actually hear that and actually support the community, not tighten our bouts and approach it from an economic rationalist perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Greco. Are there any further speakers to the substantive? Councillor Williams?
I just want to say quickly that it's really important, as I said previously, regarding what we need to do as a council. And it takes a collective, not only council, but to our officers. But to get to the point that we are tonight, to make sure that we have a sustainable budget, it's because of our officers. They work their butts off to try and work out what we want to do. So when they come to meetings like tonight, that we chop and change and make amendments, they've got to think outside the box on a regular basis and try and come up with some, you know, amendments to help us. They're here for us. And I believe that it's not only our community that always wants a lot of things to happen, and our assets, we want them to grow also. There's been some wonderful work that we've done as a council. Sadly, we haven't received virtually any money or grants from other levels of government or grant money in regards to beautiful builds that we've had in the past regarding the Children's Hub. We've had the Naranjerry Stadium, we've had, and the Northgood Aquatic Centre just recently. And most of those three big projects have cost multi-multi-million dollars. They're not cheap projects. And my point is here is that, as a council, these projects cost a lot of money. I want to ensure that we are having a sustainable budget going forward, but to ensure that we do continually build beautiful projects and assets like we have in the past. So we can look at building the Reservoir Leisure Centre, because that is what my eyes are on, and I know the community is very disappointed that it's been let go and let down for such a long time. It's because, council, prior, not just us, but prior to us, there's been this narrative that people could squeeze the operating budget and put it in other areas to benefit particular wards or a particular party. I think it's really important that we need to stay on a new narrative, and we can change it, and we need to ensure that we are building for our community future.
Thank you, councillor Williams. And we do need an extension of time to go through to 9.30. Moved by councillor McCarthy, seconded by councillor Messina, all those in favour? The extension of time is carried unanimously. Thank you for your debate, councillor Williams. So we got any further speakers on the substantive? No, okay. So we're closing the debate there. And look, from my perspective, we're almost at nine o'clock. Just three things I think are worth highlighting are e-scooters. We're hoping to join Melbourne Port Phillip and Yarra in their trial. Very excited to see e-scooters and bikes for hire around Darabben. Rewilding, we've listened to the community on that. We've listened to the community groups who said that they did not want that budget reduced. We've brought it back up to current levels. And for me, we are in a cost-of-living crisis, so I think it's very important that we've supported towards zero, we've also supported food relief. So I commend this budget to you councillors. Now, I know that we do need to pull out two things before we go to the substantive. So Governance, I hope you can help us with this. But we need to vote separately on, it's nine, something nine. The council requests that officers hold discussions with their preferred candidate for the migration public artwork about the most appropriate prominent location to place this artwork in the municipality and communicate this intention to shortlisted artists. Thank you. Can we get that on screen? We need to, oh, you've got it, thank you. Thanks so much, Nick. So councillors, we don't have time to debate this, and we have debated.
Can I just ask a question, just really briefly?
Yep.
Can we just get a comment from the officers about most appropriate and prominent location? And does that go to the committee, as in the multicultural committee that's been formulated?
Yeah. Carly, can we check, would that go to the committee?
Through you, mayor, I might just ask Vali to answer that question.
Yeah, through you, mayor. There is no committee making a decision here. There's a reference group, which involves community members, local artists, and a couple of the committee members. The shortlisted artists are currently working on concepts, and in their brief is the civic centre is referenced. So they're developing artwork in response to the location and in response to the theme. Should the preferred candidate be asked to choose or have another location recommended to them, they would likely need to develop a new concept, which would have a financial impost of approximately $3,000. So there is no preferred specific location recommended that could be considered better than civic centre. We would likely seek advice from the artist, or we could liaise internally to make some recommendations.
Thank you.
Just in relation to prominent, oh, sorry, I haven't finished my question, supplementary, what does prominent mean?
Vali, what does prominent mean?
It's not, because it might mean something, it might be a prominent back lane somewhere. So I just want to ask that question.
Generally, in public art terms, it'd be in a highly visible public location, which could be clearly viewed by many people in passing, not tucked away behind anything.
Thank you. Councillors, we're going to go straight to the vote on nine, about the preferred location for the migration artwork. Councillors, all those in favour? That's councillor Hannan, councillor Rennie, councillor Williams, councillor McCarthy, councillor Messina, all those against. Councillor Greco, all those abstaining. Councillor Demetriades, councillor Lawrence, how are you voting? You voted for, yeah, thank you. That is, that's passed. And the other one we need to vote on individually is 16. Thank you, oh, Nick, you're ready before me. So, sorry, it's 19 now. So this is about the CEO developing options for presentation to the new council, and we do not have time to debate this, so I'll go straight to the vote. All those in favour? That's councillor Hannan, councillor Rennie, councillor Williams, councillor McCarthy, councillor Messina, councillor Newton, all those against. Councillor Demetriades and councillor Greco, all those abstaining. So councillor Lawrence, I'm so sorry, I keep missing you. Are you abstaining? Voted for, thank you, I'm so sorry, it's getting late. So councillors, we will now vote on the rest. So we're voting on the substantive budget item, and all those in favour? That is carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors, we've got our pass budget. Well done, everyone. All right. But so what that means is we now have 57 minutes to get through seven items. So councillors, my expectation is that we won't spend more than eight minutes on any items, so bang, 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 let's get through it. But I do understand there's a, there might be a procedural item to change, councillor.
That's right, mayor. I'd like to move that we bring item 9.4 to be the next item that we deal with, and that's just, we have community members that are seeking to hear that item, and I think that makes no substantive difference to the order of the agenda.
Yep, so moving your straight, your say next. Have we got a second, councillor Williams, and all those in favour? Great, that's carried unanimously. So councillors, we'll go to your straight, your say. And I don't have time, we don't have time for questions, councillors. So do we have a mover of the motion, councillor? Oh, sorry, councillor Rennie, you've got to step up first.
Mayor, I've just got a conflict to declare. It's not my intention to declare a conflict on the whole, noting that there are two possible interventions, which are the interventions at G in the agenda and P in the agenda, that G and P I am in the immediate catchment of, if those could be dealt with first, perhaps?
Yes, we can. So councillor Rennie, I'll ask you to leave the chamber. Okay, councillors, let's try to move this, move through this one quickly or we won't get through the agenda. So we need to, we need to debate just G. So install a raised zebra crossing on Newcastle Street south of Young Street. And we also need to debate, was it P? Design and install road safety treatments along Newcastle Street. Yep, great. So we're just pulling out those two. Do you want to move that, councillor Demetriades?
I'm not sure, because I actually have an amendment, and one of the ones is actually in my amendment. So how would that work? So G is in my amendment as putting it up on the priority list.
So good question. Let me see Governance Advice? Okay. So I think we've got a way forward. So do I have a mover and seconder on the officer's recommendation? No, okay, so great, I've got a, so councillor McCarthy, you're moving the officer's rectory, I have a second to councillor Hannan. Okay, and so councillor Demetriades, did you want to tell us what you want to change for G and P as amendments? And then we'll vote on that, and then we'll get councillor Rennie back in the room.
Yes, sorry, mayor, sorry, I have an amendment for this particular item, and it kind of complicates it because of the conflict that's been raised.
So we just need to know, where do you want to put G? And where do you want to put?
I just want to check with officers that G is actually the Preston Primary School raised zebra crossing, is that correct? Yes, is that?
Sorry, through you, mayor. I think G is the raised zebra crossing on Newcastle, is that right, Alan? On Newcastle West, Newcastle Street, south of Young Street. So as printed in the agenda, that's the G that councillor Rennie's declared a conflict on. So is that one you're wishing to amend?
Yes, I just wanted to check with officers that that was the one that they suggested was near Preston South Primary School on Newcastle Street, that received 90% support.
Alan, do you want to answer that?
Through you, mayor, yes, that's the treatment.
Thank you, mayor. So I'd like to raise that as the top priority for these projects.
So you want to move G, install a raised zebra crossing on Newcastle Street, south of Young Street, to become A?
That's correct.
And what do you want to do for P?
Nothing further, so that just gets.
Okay, sure. Fine, yeah, so that's fine. So can I ask the mover and seconder if you're happy to accept? No, thank you. Do you have a, hang on? Yeah. So... Okay, so councillor, sorry. Councillor Demetriades, can you clarify, which item do you want to put as first?
Raised zebra crossing on Newcastle Street, that received 90% support, that was, that's near Preston South Primary School, according to what the officers have told me.
Do you want to clarify that, Alan?
Thank you for the question through you, mayor. That project isn't the project that councillor Rennie has a conflict with?
Sure, so then I don't, I can just move my amendment afterwards?
All right, so...
Rennie has a conflict with G and P in our report only.
G is that one?
Yeah, P.
Is that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, so which is the one that counts? You're confusing the hell out of me here, because she declared a conflict on G and P in our report?
Yep.
You answered councillor Demetriades that G was the one near the school that she wanted to prioritise. Is that incorrect? Okay, so which is the one that councillor Magris?
Which is the one near Preston? Yes, which one is, yeah, which is the one that she wants to? Q. Q is the one she wants to?
Okay. Councillor Demetriades, can I confirm that Q is the one that you want to move to the top of the list? Design and install zebra crossings on all four sides of the intersection of Raglan Street and Newcastle Street?
Yes, sure, that's the one that officers have said.
Then, in that case, hold off, because councillor, thank you, Alan, because councillor Rennie doesn't have a conflict on that. So then I would argue that the way forward is that we just vote on the ones that councillor Rennie does have a conflict on, right? Great. So councillors, we're going to vote on G, install a raised zebra crossing on Newcastle Street, south of Young Street. And we're going to vote on P, design and install road safety treatments along Newcastle Street before, between Walton Avenue and Raglan Street. Does the mover want to speak to this? No, does the seconder want to speak? Councillor Hannan, yes, go ahead.
I do have a question. I just, I think it's best we deal with the substantive, sorry, mayor, I think it's best we deal with substantive arguments or debates once councillor Rennie's back in.
I agree.
I'm not actually sure what we are voting on. So if you look at the, if you look at the sort of root to that clause, it says that we're endorsing the concept designs as providing the appendix, and the top eight projects in the following list are high priority, and the remainder being other priority. So I take that to mean that we are voting on G, still being in the top eight, and we are voting on whatever the other one was. are voting on whatever the other one was, all the rest not being in the top eight. So we're basically voting for them to stay either in the top eight or in the rest of the list as per.
That's correct, councillor Haddon. Yes, so this hasn't been an amendment, we're not doing the amendment yet, so yes, that's correct. So we're voting on G being in the top eight and we're voting in P not being in the top eight. Councillor Williams?
Apologies, I know you didn't want us to ask questions, but I really need to ask the question in reference to A, which is install a trial solution. Can I ask how long is that trial? Because to me, that's like how long's a piece of string? Sorry. And will it, and if that trial involving school times, as in school holidays or non-school holidays, because I think that will make a big difference.
Alan, did you want to respond?
Thank you for the question councillor Williams, through you, ma'am Newton. A trial of this style usually lasts for 12 months. It gives enough time for people who are using the street to get used to it and for us to measure and again ask the community what they think, whether there's any changes that are required.
Thank you. Councillors, we're really short on time.
I just wanted to ask, what exactly is the trial solution?
I think we should wait, I think we should wait until councillor Rennie comes back into the room to ask questions about A. So we're just dealing with H and P at the moment, so, sorry, G and P. So councillors, we're really short on time, so I'm going to go to the vote for these two. So it's one G and it's one P. So we're sort of voting on those two, just as they are currently. So councillors, all those in favour? That's councillor Hannon, oh sorry, that's, we're voting on H and P, the ones that, sorry, G and P, the ones that, just those two, that Susan. Yeah, as it is. Great, that's carried unanimously, we'll just get councillor Rennie back into the room, sorry about that, everyone. Thank you. So we'll go back to councillor Demetriades' question, which is about, which is about A.
Yes, so A says that councillor Williams also asked, install a trial solution. What exactly is a trial solution? What does it look like physically on South Crescent?
Thank you for the question councillor Demetriades, through you, ma'am Newton. The trial solution would be similar to the pop-up park James Street road closure that was installed in West Preston. It essentially provides an opportunity for people on bikes and walking to continue along the street and deterring rat-running traffic.
Thank you. I can't accept any more questions. So we have a motion. Councillor Demetriades, you had an amendment?
I guess that's correct, ma'am.
Is this your amendment councillor Demetriades?
Yes, I believe so.
Thank you. Is that acceptable, the mover and seconder? No. Do you have a seconder for the amendment? Councillor Greco, councillor Demetriades, do you want to speak to the amendment?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. I'm really concerned about the recommendations put forward to us about the Your Street, Your Say, Group B area. According to the report, the criteria that was used to establish the current priorities has now been given a 25%, weighing to safety compared to a 20% in January. But this exact, this is exactly the same weighing that's been given to council strategic plans. I believe safety should be considered a priority for these projects. The Australian Bureau of Statistics data clearly identifies that from the most recent census, 38.5% of people in Darabban travel to work in a private car and 2.4% ride a bike to work. Furthermore, the latest TIE statistics state that pedestrians make up around 15% of the total number of road deaths each year, with the most common types of crashes resulting from crossing the road. And these statistics from the TAC are significantly higher than those relating to bicycle riders. But instead, here again, the top four priority projects relate to bicycle lanes. I wanted to ask, what about children's safety, pedestrian's safety, safety for the elderly or people with mobility issues or mobility aids or those with a disability? I find it difficult to comprehend how these individuals are not considered as being part of the top priority projects when looking at safety issues in our neighbourhoods. And yet, improving access and equity in our street was only given a total weighting score of 10%, which is slightly increased since the report in January, which was only 5%. So I'm raising this amendment, again, to reprioritise the safety concerns and prioritise schools, kindergartens and childcare centres, which as we saw from the community consultation results presented in this report, these projects received very strong, if not the strongest support of all these projects. So in the interests of prioritising safety for all people, I hope that all councillors can support this amendment because it will allow all pedestrians, including children, carers and employees who walk, cycle, take public transport or a vehicle to school, to do so safely.
Thank you councillor Demetriades, councillor Greco, would you like to speak to the amendment?
Nothing further to add, ma'am, but could I say the rest of the?
Yes, we can do that, that's fine. Please take your seat. Is there anyone in opposition to the amendment? Councillor Haddon?
Thanks, ma'am. There are some factual errors with this amendment, which was only circulated this afternoon, and I've tried to correct. Before getting to those, I'm just so disappointed to hear this narrative again of kind of bikes versus school or, you know, safety versus strategy. It's unhelpful and it's not accurate. It's, it's just, it's, it's a constructed narrative for a constructed purpose. So just to go through a few inaccuracies. So the census data that I have, it's actually from 2021, 38.5% of people took a car, 7.1% people took public transport, 4.1% rode a bike or walked, 36% stayed at home. That's, that's just go to the census online. Number two, in the correction, it's not correct to say that the weightings were based on strategic direction 25% and then safety percent 25% and then value for money 20%. As if to say that somehow community consultation has been left out of this process. There was around one community consultation, there was a multi-criteria assessment of that, draft concept plans, then around two community consultation, review and feedback of that. Then there was a capital works prioritisation tool, which of course includes safety number one, equal level of strategic alignment. Another inaccuracy, to say that most people don't support, that somehow safety around schools was different and supported more than safety in other areas. I won't go into detail, but there are five projects with scores of 84 to 95%, which are left off that list because they don't fit that community narrative. And there are 194 petitioners who highly valued safety on South Crescent for bike riders. So to ignore those for a constructed narrative is misinformation.
Thank you councillor Hannon. Councillor Williams, would you like to speak to the item?
I'd like to speak in against this. I'm happy for the officers to go ahead, they have identified that these places need changes. It's not like we're knocking down a building and that it will never be rectified or changed. We have done changes in the past, I think it was Dean or James Street, where we did reverse the situation. And again, tonight, McFieden Street, we are going to do changes there. It's not like that once it's done, it's not going to be undone or changed. We can still make changes, as I said. Sorry, but I'm happy to go with the officer's recommendation here.
Thank you very much councillor Williams. I'll close the debate there. So all those in favour of the amendment? That's councillor Demetriades. All those against? That's councillor Hannon, councillor Rennie, councillor Williams, councillor McCarthy, councillor Messina, councillor Newsham, all those abstaining, councillor Greco and councillor Lawrence, thank you. So councillors, I'd really appreciate it if we didn't have any further speakers on the substantive, but does anyone need to speak? No. Okay, councillors, we'll vote on the substantive item for Your Street, Your Say, all those in favour? That's councillor Haddon, councillor Rennie, councillor Greco, councillor Williams, councillor McCarthy, councillor Messina, councillor Newsham, all those against, councillor Demetriades and all those abstaining, councillor Lawrence, thank you. We'll go back to 9.2 and councillors, we need to move really quickly. So on adoption of the 2425 council plan, action plan. And councillors, we have an officer amended recommendation before us. So councillor Messina, and did you want to add an amendment?
Yes, I do, ma'am. I'd like to include the amendment that addresses the north, yep, that's one, that's it.
Thank you. Councillor Messina?
So move an alternative motion which incorporates the officer's recommendation plus item number six.
That is really going to help move time.
I'm happy not to speak to it, ma'am.
That'd be fantastic. Yep.
Happy to second it.
Thank you very much. So councillors, we've got an alternative motion from councillor Messina, which is an amended officer's recommendation and her inclusion. You don't need to speak councillor Messina, councillor Williams, you don't need to speak, that's fine, thank you very much councillors. Is there anyone opposed to the council plan, action plan? No, we'll go to the vote, all those in favour? Thank you councillors, that's carried unanimously. Thank you so much, everyone. We'll go back to 9.3, the special rate renewal Preston, Northgate and Fairfield business precincts. We've had the submitter Emily speak already and we just really need to move through. Have we got a mover for the special rates? Councillor Rennie, have we got a seconder? Councillor McCarthy? Councillor Rennie, did you want to speak to this?
Very briefly, ma'am, thank you. This special rate comes about as a result of the collective and collaborative work of traders in these different precincts who have had the opportunity to vote and provide feedback on whether they want the special rate to apply. So this is not a charge that council collects to add to the general rate base, this is a charge that council collects with the endorsement from the traders in those areas who then use the money to further the marketing and collective efforts to make those shopping precincts appealing and to get more people in. I do understand that as with many things, there are a minority of people who would rather not pay that special rate. This is an instance where the collective, I suppose, makes that decision and the hope is that everyone will benefit. I understand that for some people, they would rather not pay, that's, that's natural and, you know, I hope that those traders associations continue to work to ensure that all people in those precincts get the benefit from that. We really value and want to see our shopping centres being incredibly vibrant and dynamic and I think that's something that this contributes to, thank you.
Thank you councillor. Who was the seconder? Councillor McCarthy, do you need to speak? No. Anyone in opposition to the special rates? No. Councillors, I'm going to put that to the vote, all those in favour? Thank you councillors, that's carried unanimously. We've done 9.4, we'll go to 9.5, we're on the review of election period policy.
Ma'am Newton, I'll move a motion to extend the time, I think we've reached 9.3.
Thank you very much councillor Greco, seconded by councillor McCarthy, all those in favour? It's carried unanimously. So we're on 9.5, review of election period policy, do I have a mover? Councillor McCarthy, do I have a second? Councillor Williams? Councillor McCarthy, would you like to speak as mover?
Ma'am, in the interest of time, I'll just thank the submitter for their submission and, and support the recommendation as listed and of course wish everyone involved in the election process all the best. May the council election process go smoothly.
Thank you very much councillor McCarthy, would the seconder like to speak? I think, thank you councillor Williams. Anyone in opposition? No, we'll go to the vote for the election period policy, all those in favour? That's carried unanimously, thank you very much councillors. We're now on 9.6, Solar Saver review. Councillor Haddon, have you got an amendment for this or do you want to put?
Yes, ma'am, I'm happy to move alternative motion with the amendment or otherwise for somebody else to move it.
Yes, if you want to move it as an, sorry, as an alternative motion, that would really help with time. So that's absolutely fine with me and we'll have councillor Williams second. Councillor Hannon, would you like to speak to the item?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Just to explain this, so I'd like to thank the officers for putting the report together on, on basically the status and the future of the Solar Savers Programme. I'd like to give credit to councillors who set this up from time ago, particularly Trent McCarthy. And what we've seen is that the world has evolved in that time. This programme has provided huge benefit to the people of Darabban and has actually provided a leadership role and has been continued around the world in different forms. Where we're at now is that the best use of resources for Darabban council to get the best outcomes for low-income people while bringing down emissions as much as possible is to slightly increase the financial cap per household, as it says there in item two. I should say, first of all, to approve the revised eligibility criteria to really make this targeted and most effective as an organisation. To cover not just solar panels but other types of equipment in the home environment, so air conditioners, heaters, hot water pumps. And through the usual, for the same financial mechanisms to basically use Darabban resources to enable more affordable, cheaper and clean energy for low-income households. The point that I'm adding there, I'm proposing to add there number six. We know that under the draft climate emergency plan, going beyond that, really the next crucial challenge, not just in Darabban but across Australia and around the world, is to electrify houses and businesses and everything that we do, basically to get off gas and fossil fuels. We've already got in the draft climate emergency plan and I'm really looking forward to finalising that soon to include other things, things like stoves and ovens in the scheme. What I'm proposing there is to go one step further. So to, to look at options for, for mobility, so that's e-bikes and e-scooters, again for low-income, low-income residents and again trying to provide a way to access affordable, clean energy for that group who they may not, you know, they may not be in position to take up the other options there of the solar panels or the air conditioner or the stove. But having access to a cheaper e-bike or e-scooter might make a huge difference to their day and help to bring down Darabban's emissions at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Haddon, did you want to speak, councillor Williams?
Very, very quickly. I just want to say a big thank you to previous councillors such as councillor Stephen Cedars, who brought in and introduced the Solar Savers Programme. And in our previous council that declared a climate emergency was the first council anywhere in the world. Particularly to our officers, thank you, but most of all, that if we did have more money, I would love to put it into, into programmes such as this to ensure that our community is getting the benefit due to the cost of living and that means everybody would benefit from it. So as I said, if we had more money, I'd love to do more things in these type of programmes.
Thank you councillor Williams. Any speakers in opposition? No, okay, councillors, we'll go to the vote for Solar Savers, all those in favour? That's carried unanimously, thank you councillors. And we'll go on to 9.7, which is the governance report for June. Have we got anyone wanting to move the governance report? Councillor Rennie and seconded by councillor Messina, councillor Rennie, would you like to speak to the governance report?
Thank you, ma'am, I'll keep this one very brief. The governance report is fairly short this month and includes some of the usual things that we see, like a summary of attendance at advisory committee meetings and councillor briefings. It notes the reports that mayors and councillor, the mayor and councillors have submitted prior to this meeting. This is a great way for our community to know what we've been up to as their local representatives. Notes the responses to public question time and importantly, it has some general planning information, including applications that have been determined by VCAT. And I think that will be of significant interest to community members who follow planning matters to actually understand what happens and how outcomes are often mediated at VCAT rather than going to a full hearing. So for the governance junkies out there, this is a fabulous report and I commend it to everyone.
Thank you. Any speakers in opposition? No, okay, we'll go to the vote, all those in favour? Thank you councillors, that's carried unanimously and we'll go to 9.8, the contract award for the panel, for the provision of mechanical and electrical services. Have we got a mover? Councillor Rennie and seconded by councillor Williams. Councillor Rennie, would you like to speak to this item?
Thank you, ma'am. I'll just make sure that the staff could get it up on the board with the correct names in it. That's fantastic, thank you.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I really like it when these matters come to council, but I also love the fact that I have absolute confidence that the staff who have worked on the assessment of these contracts have applied really good processes in terms of probity to ensure that our council and our community is getting best value for money out of these contracts. So in this case, there are two parts to the contract, one is preventive maintenance, so that's about making sure that we don't have electrical faults disrupting business and that we are keeping on top of everything. And the other is a panel for reactive maintenance and capital renewals. That means that we have the resources available. It's important that we do this contract work beforehand because this is not the type of work that you can go out to tender once you identify that there's a problem. If there's some kind of mechanical or electrical fault, that's not the time to start contract negotiations, and that's why we have a panel. I'd like to thank all of the staff who have been involved because I know that it's quite a rigorous and time-consuming process making sure that probity applies. So thanks to the team, and I hope that, and I'm sure that our community will get good value out of these and that those behind-the-scenes operations will continue to be smooth.
Thank you councillor Rennie, and would the seconder like to speak?
No, thank you, mayor, happy to put it to vote.
Thank you very much councillor Williams, I appreciate that. We'll go to, any speakers in opposition? No, okay, let's go to the vote on 9.8, all those in favour? Carried unanimously, thank you very much councillors. So we'll now go to item 10, items to be tabled, there are none. Item 11 notices a motion, there are none. Item 12, urgent business, there is none. We have no confidential items at item 13, so that takes us to item four, the close of meeting, as there is no other business to consider this evening. I would like to declare the council meeting closed at 9.36, and I was a bit worried there for a minute with Your Street, Your Say about getting through the agenda, but councillors, I really want to say a big thank you for moving so quickly through the rest. I really appreciate it as chairperson. And thank you very much officers, especially everyone who worked on the budget. I know how many months and how many hours that takes, so thank you so much, everyone. And good night, councillors, officers and members of the public in attendance at our viewers live streaming tonight's meeting.
And to all the councillors who won't be here next time, then that's their last budget for council.
Here, here, thank you councillor Williams, and thank you to some of the councillors who won't be here, who, yeah, for passing a balanced budget, we're very grateful, and the future council will be grateful as well.